Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Workshop. This is November 3rd, 2021. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you all continue to remain standing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to give a prayer? Tom, thank you.
Let us pray. Lord, we sure do thank you. We thank you for your goodness, your grace, and your mercy. We thank you for your son, Jesus. And Father, I pray in Jesus' name, your blessing over this meeting this evening, Lord. I pray, Lord, that you knit the hearts and minds of this council along with all of us who are here today, and that it's together, Lord, to be in one accord. We invite your Holy Spirit to come, to lead us, to guide us into all truth, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Ms. Odom, go call.
Mayor White.
Present.
Vice Mayor Handtawer.
Here.
Captain Norman Ryan.
Here.
Captain Norman Kenny Avadis. Vice Mayor.
President.
Jan Smith, Finance Officer.
Here.
Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Troy Slattery, Public Works.
Here.
Georgina Seck, Community Development.
Here.
Julie Danowski, Records clerk.
Here.
Lieutenant Gox.
I'm here.
Andrew Hand, City Attorney.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website, City Hall Bulletin Board, on Wednesday, October 27th, 2021, and amended on October 28th at item number 15, and back up to item number 9 and number 17.
Thank you very much, Ms. Odom. Before we get started, I want to go over a few of the ground rules. If you would like to speak at tonight's workshop, you'll have two opportunities: one at the beginning of the meeting, one at the end of the meeting. If you sign up in the back there, you will get first preference to speak. If you want to speak, you have three minutes to speak. If you're on the agenda for a presentation, we ask you to try to keep your presentation somewhere around 10 minutes. If you look at our agenda, you can see that we have actually 22 agenda items. I always figure that it usually takes, on average, 10 minutes per item, so right there, that's 220 minutes. That means we're looking at nearly a four-hour meeting if it goes 10 minutes apiece. So we will have to hold everybody to time limits. It's only fair for the residents that are here and staff who has already been here since 7 o'clock this morning to not have to stay later than normal. Please, at this time, if you have a ringing device, please turn it off. If you elect to speak, please speak loudly and directly into the microphone. This is being recorded. It's being transcribed. There are some people that are listening to it on Zoom, so what you say is recorded and important. Oftentimes, in city business, what is said at these meetings is retrieved six months later, a year later, whatever, for historical reference. So it's very important that what you say is recorded. If you have a need to converse with your neighbor, the acoustics in this room are very good. We can actually hear very soft talk here, and it does, it is distracting. If you have a reason to talk to your neighbor, just step outside briefly, say what you need to say, and come on, come on back in. So one, one thing we're going to do a little bit differently today, rather than start off initially with the public comment, we've asked Chief McQuaid to give a traffic study. The reason for this was our understanding there was going to be a few people that wanted to speak to the traffic issues, the speeding issues, and we thought if Chief McQuaid addressed those ahead of time, that would be helpful to anybody that might have any comments. So after Chief McQuaid has finished, anyone who has a comment about anything, you don't have to just speak to things on the agenda. You can speak to anything you want to speak to. This is the night for council to hear what you have to say. So Chief McQuaid, please come on up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I did conduct a traffic study on 41, and because of the length of the council meeting tonight, it will be very brief. Over 20-some thousand cars was part of the survey that was conducted by the county, and the average speed on there was 35 miles an hour. There was, I'm sorry, 33 miles an hour over the speed of 55. There was eight cars. So we do not have a large speed problem on 41. Of course, there are some, and the majority of the cars that are speeding are just before the rush hour and after the rush hour. As far as the stops made by my officers, I will tell you that during the months, I will give you several months, that these officers made these stops. In April, they conducted 79 traffic stops. May, 49 traffic stops. June, 63. July, 62. And September, 62. That was 327 stops. In that, they wrote, wrote 138 citations. So the officers are doing their job. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, any comments by council for, for the chief?
Thank you for the report.
You're more than welcome.
Personally, my personal opinion, you're not going to catch them all. There's no way.
Well, you go fishing. You don't catch them all, but we do catch our fair share.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, chief. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Now we go to public comments. Those that have signed up first will be called first. Ms. Odom?
Good evening. I'm Susan Jones, 9129 Southwest 190th Avenue Road, Dunellen, Florida. I'm here representing the Rainbow Springs Art Organization. We are a nonprofit that leases space from the city, and we are very grateful and happy with that relationship. We wanted to alert the council to the fact that we are actively marketing not only our facility, but the area. We're participating in the Inverness Art Festival to promote the gallery and encourage visitors that are there interested in art to come to Dunellen. We've got a written report in your package, but just some highlights. The Chamber Mixer was very successful recently. We had 50, 60 business people come and see the gallery, enjoy our durs, and see some demonstrations by several of our artists, and frankly, it was a lot of fun. We just had a good time. In November, we've got youth classes every Wednesday. We'll have seven adult classes from, everything from exploring creativity, for those who may not know that they're even creative yet, mosaics, resin art, basic calligraphy, weaving a snowman, acrylic pouring, and holiday crafting, for those who are ready to get ready for the holidays. We have some research that was done by Joe Jovison, and he is fully supportive, as is our board, of electric charging stations on our property. We believe that having a charging station in the historic district will encourage some foot traffic. Once you plug in, you're going to walk around and find something to eat or do a little shopping. So while parking is limited at our site, we are fully supportive and welcoming of any opportunities to help build a grant or an application for electric charging in the city of Dunellen. Are there any questions?
Ms. Jones, thank you. I do have a question. On your events that you mentioned, I'm sure they're on your website for people to follow, correct?
Correct.
Are they also connected to the city's website in any way? If someone doesn't know about your site, and they go to the city, they can somehow...
I don't believe we are linked, so that if you go to our site, you get to the city site, or if you go to the city site, you're able to see our site, but we welcome the opportunity to make that happen if it's possible.
Yes. The question, the reason I'm asking this, we had a very good meeting with the Marion County Tourist Bureau today, Development Council, and what we found was that there's a kind of a disconnect where they are doing their thing with their tourist activities and their events. Dunellen is doing its thing with our events, whether it's Boomtown, Art Festival, Songfest.
Right.
And the Chamber of Commerce is doing its thing, and we found that there was, there was a lot going on that we weren't knowing and connecting together. And that, that's what I took out of this meeting, that if we start connecting what we're all doing, we can kind of feed off of each other, and that was the reason I asked if there was a way for the city to...
Absolutely. Mayor, you're right on track. I know the city gave the chamber some funding to improve their website, and I'm hoping that we can all collaborate to link our sites together and make sure that, you know, there's an events calendar that's shared or easily accessed, whether you go, whether you're going in originally to the city site, the chamber site, or the tourism development site, or the Rainbow Springs Art site. We use Facebook extensively, and calendaring is, is a challenge because dates change and things, you know, move around, but it's important because people will look at the calendar to see what's happening this week.
Very good. Any other comments? Yes, Vice Mayor.
A, great job, as always, and I'm always promoting you all as well because you're just such a great organization. But, Mr. Mayor, I think that before budget session, I had brought up the fact that we were going to start trying to do the Facebook, and again, that's kind of where, when you do the Facebook, you join each other, you like each other. That, as a community, we're seeing what interests us and what interests each other, so I think that's one of the things that we can link ourselves to, because as far as websites go, unless you're specifically wanting to go to a website for a certain reason, going to Facebook's going to pop up a lot more. Once you hit it, you don't have to keep looking for it, just going to kind of keep back. So I think we can like you, you can like us, and we'll all have a good following.
Anything that keeps more people coming in.
Amen.
For all these wonderful events. I know we've got a Christmas parade coming up, at least I believe there is one again this year, and it's exciting because these are fun events.
And I think your suggestion on the charging station, wow, I hadn't thought of that one yet. That's a good one.
Well, it's your property, you know, the city owns it. I understand that Jan and Troy have already had some conversations with the Duke Power people about, you know, potential locations, and I just wanted you all to know that we would love to be the first or among the first.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Odom, next.
Julian Mendonka, 11894 East Blue Cove Drive. I, I just wanted to acknowledge the continued efforts by the staff and the council to be including the public in the governing process. There's been a lot of opportunities, and we'll have good interactions, I think, through volunteering and other ways, and that the staff and the council have embraced the public. I think when we do the right things for the right reasons, we can feel pride and we can move forward together as a community. When things feel right, it promotes conversation and compromise. I wanted to speak to the tone of the recurring conversation related to the police station as we, ready to spend a million or more dollars. And the conversation, we all know, has spanned for years, not by any responsibility of this council, but because previous initiatives for this weren't so well thought out. So this council, I feel, has spent the year undoing historical decisions so that we could be set on the path to make a smart decision about what our police need. Until we have honest conversations and do our homework to understand what our city of 1900 really needs, I feel this conversation is going to continue to feel heavy and forced. It's alarming to hear statements like, "Let's just get it done," "We've been spending too much time talking about this," or "We owe it to them." The newest council members campaigned on treating taxpayer dollars like their own, and I'm just feeling like when we have the total costs, when we have transparent conversations about future spending for the maintenance of the building, projected growth of the police force, I think that then perhaps it will go smoother. So my message is that this doesn't have to be the council that puts up the new police station. It just needs to be the council who approaches it from a practical standpoint, acts with fiscal responsibility, and asks and listens to the will of the people. The Citywide Survey of Protect Our Neighborhoods reflected that spending more than $1 million was ranked low amongst the taxpayer priorities. 61% of respondents rated this as slightly or not very important. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jack Roland.
Welcome, Mr. Roland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Jack Roland. My address is 5250 Northeast 23rd Avenue in Ocala. My Dunellen connection is, is I'm the manager of Robert's Funeral Home here in Dunellen. I'm also one of those rare people. I'm actually a native, born and raised literally across the street, and I have three, three generations of my family that are buried in the local cemetery, and that's what I bring to you this evening, is to address the document that I came across a couple of years ago. It's called the Rules and Regulations of Dunellen Memorial Gardens, and whoever drafted this had the best of intentions, but the document is poorly written, probably from someone who just did not have any experience in the cemetery and funeral industry. I have been in the funeral profession for over 52 years. I've also worked with very, very large cemeteries as well. I made some notes, made quite a few suggestions to this document over a year ago, submitted it, and not in an official way, but to, to staff. I was pleasantly surprised when I came in early this evening, was able to meet with both Mandy and Troy, to find out that a lot of these things have already been addressed. So my purpose for being here this evening is to, I guess, officially recommend the council to let us, myself and, and council staff, address these things on the bylaws or the rules and regulations, and work together to create a document that is a good, strong document, one that we would be proud of, and I am more than willing to work with staff in any way. Again, I thank Troy and Mandy for the work that I find out that they've already done on this document. So be happy to answer any questions. I will submit my suggestions within the next week to 10 days, and then whatever council would like for me to do to help, I'd be more than willing to do so.
Very good. Mandy, on this, what would council need to do? We, we know there, this is out there, what hundreds of other things to do. So what would we need to do? It's just simply to direct staff to take a look at it? I don't think there's going to be any opposition to this, so what do we do now?
You can just state it's okay to work with Mr. Roland, to update it. It's not a document that was adopted by council or passed by resolution that I'm aware of. I've not been able to find that anywhere. It's just a, a written policy that was probably drafted by somebody at Public Works back in the 90s. But sure, we'd be happy to work with him to...
Is that something that could be done by consensus tonight, or is that something that needs to go to a council? Any of us have an issue with staff working with Mr. Roland? Okay.
I have one second left. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you, sir, for offering to volunteer and help. Good community partnership. Kathy Dunn.
Very good. Next. Oh, okay. We have no beeper, huh?
Do three to me, and then I'll do three to him. Kathy Dunn, 11386 Hendrix Drive. I'd like to thank Chief McQuaid for putting a flashing sign on Bostick to monitor the speed at which cars are going by our park, Ernie Mills Park, and our basketball court. And I think it's very beneficial to continue this process because we do look for the future, where we hope to grow the community as a pedestrian and a biking community. I do know that my perception and the public's perception, business owners that I've talked to all around town, is that people are speeding on 41, and I would like to see if possibly we could get the speeding sign that flashes, that monitors your speed, that you see all over the place, to remind people that 35 miles an hour is our speed limit, and we're, we don't want to be a drive-through town. We want to be a leisurely-paced town, and to encourage the kind of growth we want to have in the future. So I thank, thank him for doing that. The other thing I wanted to address was the volunteer group. We have had two workdays so far. We are growing in number, and we are having our next workday on November 19th at 8 o'clock, where we're going to finish working at City Hall. Now, if you, most cities have volunteer groups, and I feel that it increases a sense of pride and public participation in our community. So I think it's a very good thing that this is going on. Now, to be, to operate power equipment, the city is requiring us to have a drug test, and I went to get my drug test last week at Kears Park in Ocala, and I had an appointment at 9 o'clock, and I still had to wait an hour. It's very understaffed and very congested, and sees a lot of people. So I wondered, is there any way that we could find a place closer, or that would maybe a little bit better staff, to encourage more people to get the drug test so they can use power equipment? And hopefully, we'll have a golf cart one day that we can go around and water the trees we hope to plant in the future. So, thank you.
Very much, Ms. Dunn, and you are recognized for being the horse behind our volunteer movement, and those of you that are joining us this evening, please, when you go outside, take a look at our shrubbery and our mulching and our fountain that's running. Our volunteers and staff, Troy, a big part of it, have done a lot to improve the aesthetics of this building, and there's a lot more to come. Very, kind of exciting when you have one man who has already come here, said, "I'm willing to sit down with staff and help with the bylaws," and you have another person come up here, "I'm willing to come out and spend my time putting plants in." So we, we have some, there's some good energy, some good karma going on right now. Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I, I believe you said you were interested in getting a golf cart for moving people in, possibly planting stuff around? Watering plants and picking up trash. I believe our police department has a golf cart, do we not?
No, ma'am.
Let Troy, I'm going to let Troy handle this, because he can raise his hand. Thank you.
We, we have a golf cart.
Okay.
With Public Works. We were able to get it running last year. We use it at the Blue Run Park. Once the volunteers qualify to use power equipment, then we can access the use of that golf cart here in the historic district, following the guidelines, operating a golf cart beside City Labs.
Thank you.
So, yes.
Very good. Thanks, Troy. Ms. Odom?
I don't have anyone else signed up to speak at the beginning of the meeting, at the end of the meeting? Mr. Viver, was that your intention, to speak at the end of the meeting? Okay.
Mr. Viver, welcome. Well, as you know, we, we did say that it's three minutes, you know, and for all the reasons above, you know, we...
I won't take too long.
I mean, if I say those things at the beginning, I can't ignore them after we start the meeting.
No, I understand. My name is Bill Viver.
Oh, was that a joke?
Well, I did laugh. I smiled. 9552 Southwest 192nd Court Road, Dunellen. I want to bring up a couple of issues about the resolution that we just saw, that we didn't have for tonight later, and I'm not sure I'll be able to stay later, but a couple of issues have come to mind. One is the format of this resolution. I'm not sure quite what the point of it is, because remember, when we started the exercise, it was about an ordinance to convert the 2015-11 into an ordinance that the police could enforce, and that was available to visitors, and was an enforceable ordinance, which we did not have because we had a resolution. So I couldn't, don't quite understand, we're back here with another resolution, which is another unenforceable document. So that, I didn't quite understand why we're doing that. I also want to just point out, the format of the management plan is not in resolutions. It's in subject heads. Here's the one on park rules, and there's many of these. There's probably 30 or 40 of them. As you go through the management plan, you'll see federal hog control, invasive plant control, so on, so on, so on. And this is the park rules. So it would seem to me, the first thing to do would be to finish our exercise with getting the park rules ordinance done, and then do an amendment to the management plan and put that in here, where it was and where it belongs, and where, and this format, this framework, is not something that we came up with. This is a FCT framework. It's the format that they give you when you start the process. So you go down the list, and you go down item by item, so that you're covering all the items. So that's one point I wanted to make. It would be much simpler, let's get the ordinance done. We're close to the end of that. Put it in the management plan, and be done with that part of it. If you want to go on to other things, that'd be fine. The other thing I wanted to mention to you is that, you all know this, but I'll bring it up again. When Blue Run Park was set up, it recognized the fact that there'd been a 30-year agreement with Marion County to have the livery operate from KP Hall to Blue Run Park. So that's been approved, and we have that done. It's, it's kind of tied in an interlocal agreement between Marion County and Dunellen. We're all familiar with that. And the reason that was done, that was an exception to all the numerous statements in the management plan that prohibit commercial use. There's no doubt about that. That's in the management plan in many places. It's in warranty deed, it's in the grant contract, it's in the language in the management plan. It's very clear, that's the purpose. The purpose of the park is to protect the natural communities of Blue Run Park and to provide passive recreation for visitors. That's what the park was there for. That's why the state gave you $3.2 billion. So I have one suggestion, and I think this issue's going to keep coming up again and again and again, the issue of commercial use of Blue Run Park. And I've made recommendations, this is, I think, the second or third time I've done this. I wanted to add to the last section to this, in your, in your resolution, if you decide to go with a resolution, page two, where it starts out, notwithstanding a definition of commercial use, I'm making a strong recommendation that we add to that the words, "The KP Hall Shuttle Service is the sole commercial shuttle service permitted to utilize Blue Run Park." Let's make that clear for this council, for the next council, so we don't keep going through these issues with commercial use again and again and again. So that's a recommendation that I'm making. It's totally consistent with the management plan, it's consistent with the warranty deed, all the documents. Let's do this and get this behind us, so we don't keep arguing. This is going to come up again. If it's not this issue, it'll be another one a year from now, and there's several ones in the pipeline right now.
All right, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else sign up? All right, anyone who hasn't signed up, you can still speak. Yes, come on up, Chris. Name and, name and address.
Chris Anderson, 11463 North William Street, Dunellen. So I've got a lot to cover here, but probably not going to get it all in, but I've got a few things just to go over. I've had access to some documents, and I would like to say that the city's lack of transparency that has taken place behind the public eye with an attempt to rid of Dunellen hometown resident and local businessman of his livelihood paints a very dark picture. I'm truly baffled by the unethical approach the city and members of council have taken in regard to our company, and the, the extent to which the city is trying to put small business out of business that serves this local community. Blue Run Park's been used by private outfitters such as Dragonfly Water Sports for over 20 years, and over 50-plus years by Marion County, which further establishes the public's customary recreational use that has been ancient, reasonable, without interruption, free from dispute, for, for the only publicly defined exit point for Rainbow River funded by public dollars of the state by FCT for a public purpose, to increase public access for outdoor-based recreational activities, not restrict such use. Again, the determination by FCT that private commercial shuttle use is not considered a disallowable activity per the management plan or the grant contract has been recognized by the city attorney, Andrew Hand, along with his firm, in writing on record, and also acknowledged numerous times by Don Bound, which has since considered the issue closed. Now that all the dots line up with the city's documented, you know, agenda from the city staff and members of council, especially Mayor White, who, you know, seems to have some sort of chip on, on his shoulder as the implied emails exchanged on record pertaining to the issue, to, to fulfill the requests and, and recommendations of the allegiance of RRC. There could be no better example of what a sham political dealing this is. You know, it's, there are years' worth of dialogue to back my findings. I mean, numerous attempts in angles of city, the RRC have tried to attack my business for zoning, tried to withhold my business tax receipt, now this commercial use deal. It raises all kinds of questions. One of any, you know, how unethical are some of our own very elected officials are? I mean, it's just, it's baffling. I still cannot wrap my head around the fact that Mayor White, along with the city attorney, Andrew Hand, you know, both, both faced, lied to me along uh, along with the city attorney Andrew Hand, you know, both, both faced lied to me along with the rest of the general public in front of council on record last month when asked about the FCT determination. Your exact response was, "Not that I'm aware of. Well, I've got documentation that states otherwise." Um, you know, that you've been aware of this information for a couple of years now. And not just once, you've been, uh, I believe Andrew Hand has, has re-sent you this information where it specifically states that, um, you know, that, uh, that shuttle use is not considered commercial use. Um, so it's, there's just a lot. I mean, here's one from Andrew Hand where it says, uh, two thousand nineteen from his, you know, "Per FCT, as the, the current shuttle and takeout activities do not result in fees being collected for the direct use of the project site. There are no reporting requirements imposed by the grant contract. Accordingly, the current operations in and of themselves at this time do not appear to cause per se violations of the management plan or grant contract." I mean, there's, there's, I've got plenty of it in here to, to, you know, contrary to the, what's been discussed up here. So I don't think we have been, been open and transparent, uh, with the public. I have not been able to, to speak on that information. That's gonna affect my business in front of council. And that's why I've been coming up here to try to work as a partner, to work with you all. But obviously I have not had that chance. So, um, that's all I can say right now. So...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Be on the lookout for an additional email. I'll try to put some of this stuff together just to kind of as a refresher for council. All right?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. My, my only comment would be that the documents and emails that you have are transparent because it is public record. So everything that you have there is by definition transparent because it is a public record.
Right. That was not discussed in the public meetings.
All right. But so anybody in this room, anybody in the world can ask for those records. So it's totally transparent to all. Okay. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak in the audience? Okay. All right. So we go to, we're out of public comments? Oh, okay. Susan, please. Name and, uh, address.
Suzanne Eno, nine-two-two zero, Southwest one ninety-third Circle, Dan Allen, Florida. This gentleman, I have to help. There he is. He started a business without checking for the rules and regulations and, uh, to add on to what he got from the county. Now I'm wondering just what the county is thinking about a man who wants to have a business, uh, has added a business, additional business, that is against the rules and regulations. So I'm just wondering how Marion County is going to react when the contract is up.
Here's the contract.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. Now council will, uh, now go to its agenda. There will be, uh, one more opportunity for public participation at the end of the council meeting. Uh, you can make comments on what you hear us discuss, or if something comes to mind and you want to talk about something totally unrelated, you will have your second opportunity to do that. Go to item number three, Dan Allen Chamber and Business Association Report. Hello, Judy.
My name is Judy Toiliger. I'm the Executive Director of the Dan Allen Chamber. My address is two-one-two-four-nine Southwest one hundred and second Street Road, Dan Allen. Uh, I'm just here to give you the report for today. Our membership update, and some of these may be repeated because they came in towards the beginning of the month. Um, we have Liberty Tax, Victoria Hendrich, Dan Allen Community Services, Optimize My Biz, Aldi, Cell Health, W R L E ninety-four-point-nine, Air Distributors, The Metal Shop, Sabor Colombiano, which is a food truck, Ellen Bowles Transportation, Regions Bank, U-Turn for Christ Florida, Thirty-Nine Storage LLC, and that is a total of thirteen for the month of October. We had quite a few, quite a few members. Um, I would like, uh, to do an event update for the Two Rivers Music Festival and Food Truck Rally. It was in fact a great success. Uh, we had a really large turnout. Um, and I'd like to thank all the bands for keeping us entertained. Our food trucks were so busy that most of them actually ran out of food before the end of the night. So they were happy. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank, uh, the community of volunteers for helping during the music festival. Dave Fowler and his wife for helping the festival goers across the street. Ruff Pennington for getting the change and collecting the money from our beer and water tents. Michelle Wooton for running one of our beer tents. And I'd also like to, a very special thank you to Julie Mancini and her husband Gavin, and Mary Lynn and Tom Welch. It was a long night for us all. However, even though they were all exhausted, Julie and Gavin from running around for five hours taking great pictures for us, and Tom and Mary Lynn for helping us set up and manning water tents and then staying late to help clean up. Their dedication to the city of Dan Allen and the chamber is unparalleled. And it was a great success thanks to everyone that helped. So thank you, everyone that helped. Appreciate it. Also, uh, we have some upcoming events. November sixth, the Women's Club of Dan Allen will hold a chili lunch from eleven to two. Um, also, November sixth is our first Saturday market, which will be held from eight to two at Ernie Mills Park. The Board of Directors decided to hold it at Ernie Mills Park because it would be a, in a central location with more parking and easy access for everyone. So please come and shop. And, uh, so far we have twelve vendors and ten businesses offering Saturday specials. So hopefully we'll get a lot of food from that. November thirteenth, the American Legion Craft Show will be held from nine to three at Post Fifty-Eight on Forty-One, US Forty-One. November seventeenth is our Business After Hours, and it's gonna start at five-thirty, and that's hosted by Fish Hawk Spirits in Ocala. December second is the official day for the Home Depot painting of the outside of the chamber. I also have a volunteer signup sheet if anybody's interested in helping volunteers to paint. December fourth is the Christmas Parade on Pennsylvania Avenue and Bostick Street. December fifteenth is the Business After, is our next Business After Hours, and that's hosted by Ocala Eye right on North Williams Street. November ninth, at six P M. is our next board meeting, and there will be no dinner mixers for November and December. That's all I have. Thank you.
I just want to tell you that the, um, event was great. I know Ms. Williams, she was out there just, she was shaking it.
Yeah.
But no, we had, we had a great time. Cause I helped, my office and I, we helped man one of the, uh, beer booths, and we just had a great time. And we, we loved it. It was so much fun. Can't wait to volunteer again and do it.
Thank you so much for your help. We appreciate it.
We did.
Thank you, Judy. And I, I would just like to chime in that that music festival is awesome. Yeah, it is. You have four different shows going on at the same time scattered. And then you have four new shows that continues, uh, nearly five hours of music. I, uh, everyone that I've spoken to that went to the event had a double thumbs up on everything you did. The only complaint I heard is, uh, at the beginning of it, the beer wasn't cold enough.
Hey, look, my hands almost froze off trying to keep that stuff cold.
And one of the vendors, I'm probably saying, um, he currently lives in Gainesville, but he's from Dan Allen to check my area. And he did really good. I was glad. I happened to see him there with his business.
So those in the, in the audience, if you missed it this year or in the previous years, when it comes back around, I would, uh, highly recommend it. Usually the bands play different styles of music, whether it's country, rock, um, uh, classics, classic stuff. So there, there's something there for you.
That couple that you mentioned, think of them, Pamela Way. The lady and the guy that are often here.
Yes, Dave and Patsy.
Is that them? They were, they were in front of Bad Cock and they were really dancing. They were swinging.
Oh, oh, they live right there next door to the, uh, the bridge.
Yes. Yeah.
She was. She was there.
It was nice.
And a lot of people from, cause you know, as we're gonna talk, but a lot of people were from a lot of different areas, and they had even heard about it over in the villages that there was something really cool going on in Dan Allen. So they came from the villages over here. So yeah, it was awesome.
So congratulations. Job well done. And keep it up. All right. We now move to agenda item number four, board reports. Do we have anything from, uh, planning that you would like to say?
Brenda DiArvo, one-one-six-six-one Camp Drive. I don't have anything to report. The last meeting, I was out of town. And unfortunately, we had two of our members that were incapacitated and couldn't attend. So the meeting was canceled due to lack of quorum. However, um, as you know, Mr. Mayor, uh, our vice, previous vice mayor, Lisa Sheffield, has agreed to come back on the board and serve. So we're very happy about that. Uh, she'll be serving in an alternate position if accepted, but we still have one more vacancy for an alternate. So I'd like to put that out there. Uh, we're going to have some exciting things start happening, perhaps the bringing, uh, back of Main Street. So, um, anyone out there that is thinking about serving, please consider submitting an application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that, that point should be, uh, pushed a little bit. A lot of people ask, "What can I do to help? What can I do to get involved?" And when we have vacant seats on our boards, that is one way you can really help, step up and get involved with these seats. You'd be surprised. A lot of the work that council eventually does and what we finally mone on, these boards underneath us have done the lion's share of the work. So it's not like your efforts are not noted and appreciated. Uh, you do most of the work and come to us with recommendations. It's very important. So if you want to step up and you're interested in that, um, please, please consider that. The other board we have is the Historic Board. Is there anybody hearing it? Jan, you're, you're...
Actually, nothing to report of significance. And, um, this, next week's meeting has been canceled due to, uh, lack of business.
Lack of business. Okay. We're done with agenda item number four. Now we're going to, uh, agenda item number five, special presentation. Fast track, Dan Allen. Tyler, you come?
Mayor? They're gonna be here on Monday.
Okay, that's right. That's right.
We got our dates crossed.
Okay.
They're gonna be here on Monday. And, and if I may, can I make a request, um, that we, uh, go ahead, since we invited Mr. Parker to come to the meeting to update us on the Little League, if we would allow him to go ahead and speak because he has a power commitment and needs to leave by six-thirty?
Counsel, are you...
That's fine.
Good with that? Okay. Um, to clarify, in case you didn't hear what that exchange was, item number five has been postponed to a future date. So we're now leapfrogging by request to number seven, and we'll come back to number six. Welcome back, Adam.
I feel like I need to address everybody.
Name and address.
Adam Parker, the Dan Allen Little League, one-two-two-one-four South Bridges Road. I'm here to update the, what happened with our lights, our stadium lights. Um, just to give a kind of a little recap, uh, not all the, uh, close to sixty lights, stadium lights were not working and have not been working for some time. So, uh, I got an estimate from Midstate Electric. They quoted it, uh, around fif, just under fifteen grand. Uh, we were able to get some donations from the citizens, uh, at our ballgames. And then, uh, the council approved, uh, fifteen thousand, uh, to go, uh, to the lights. So the lights were paid for. Um, and just to give everybody an update on the lights, every light out there works. Thank goodness. Uh, it is nice going out there and having the place entirely lit up. Uh, I can tell you as a ball player, trying to catch a pop fly when you only have, uh, half the lights is not very fun. And I've seen some kids take some to the face. So, uh, now we're able to, uh, able to say that all the lights are fixed. Um, I will update you on what it cost. It, it actually ended up costing us only, uh, eleven thousand eight-hundred-eighty-eight dollars and forty-four cents. So we have some funds left over. Um, with your permission, uh, I have some other items that I was hoping to use the rest of the, uh, funds for, which would be, uh, there's twenty-one hundred dollars worth of clay that I need to put on the fields. Uh, I just had to purchase an eight-hundred-dollar, uh, motor for our infield groomer. And we've had some other miscellaneous, uh, uh, maintenance repairs on our mowers, um, which would take up the rest of the, uh, that fifteen thousand with your permission. I'll leave that to y'all. But thank you for the, uh, the, the donation. That was, uh, very generous and I definitely will not forget it.
Hey, uh, Ms. Odom, is there any action the council has to make to allow them to use the leftover money for other Little League? I didn't know if we tied what we gave them directly to the lights.
We did. If the motion was directly, uh, to repair the lighting, I'll have to go back and look.
All right. Just, just make sure it's on the agenda in case we need to do something on Monday.
If it was directly tied to the lighting, then probably just a simple motion to allow them to use it for other necessities out there would be appropriate.
Okay. We'll put it on the agenda for Monday. And, uh, just want to say to you, along with that meeting we had with the tourist council today, we did talk about the tournaments that they put on throughout the county, big-time tournaments. And we did put the, uh, bug in their ear. It'd be nice if they would play a game or two our way. So, uh, the director, after our meeting today, actually went out and took a look at your field. And we'll see how that goes. That would be a, a real feather in our cap if we could get a few of their games to be played over here and get people to come over and use our facility. So we're, we're trying, we're trying to let everybody know about you. And the more, more people that are aware of what you do and the more people that use the field, the better. You'll get support. Okay?
Thank you.
Take your hard work.
All right. Now we go back to number six, presentation by Chris Shirley, the Preserve at Rainbow Springs RV Resort. Welcome. So if, if either one of you are gonna speak or both, please, when you speak, name and address.
Absolutely. My name is Chris Shirley, seven-seven-seven-oh Southeast Twelfth Circle in Ocala. I'm, uh, here today, uh, on behalf of partnership of Pierpont Collop and Shirley. And we're talking about property parcel number three-three-six-nine-oh-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero. And thanks first of all for having us back. It's, uh, the Preserve RV Resort. Uh, we were with y'all a couple of months ago, uh, to come back with a presentation. Thank you for having us. Thank you for putting us on the agenda. Uh, and without further ado, I'm gonna turn you over to both our civil engineer and our landscape architect, who is going to present this and answer any questions that you may have. Thank you, folks.
All right. Good evening. Uh, my name is Paul Gibbs. I'm a landscape architect and land planner with Community Land Design, uh, seventeen-seventy-three East Cleveland Street, Hernando, Florida, in Citrus County. Um, I believe the last time I was here in this room was when I was helping with Publix getting the approvals for that project. So, so that was a lot of fun, um, working with that. And, and I've been to the Publix. It's very nice. And, um, but today I'm, I'm happy to work with, with our team and to present, um, the Preserve RV Resort. And if we can go to the next slide. Um, but the project is located, um, right next door to the First United Methodist Church of Dan Allen on forty, um, where the second to the last parcel, um, at the west end of the city. So we're almost to the city limit line. So if that gives you an idea, I believe it's about a mile and a half from City Hall. Uh, one reason we're excited about this RV resort is because of all the things that Dan Allen offers. I mean, we just mentioned earlier, um, all the cool festivals that y'all have, and it brings in a lot of people from out of town. Um, we've got, um, the historic village, the shopping, um, and all the natural amenities with the rivers and the fishing and swimming, kayaking, et cetera, the, the different trails that intersect through Dan Allen. So there's really a lot to do, uh, for, especially for an RV enthusiast, because they're typically a very active outdoors type of group. Go to the next slide. Uh, these next few slides, we just wanted to give you a, a feel for that character of the property and a little better idea, um, where it's located. Uh, these are some... These are some semi-historic areas, starting at 1999. In 2004, you could see it was a planted pine plantation. And then somewhere in the era of around 2015 or so, those pines have been harvested. And then in 2019, and then we'll go to the next slide, which is the current, 2021. And it, it's hard to tell on the screen, but the property after the pines were harvested has since been replanted in, in pine trees. And you'll also notice the adjacent property to the west and the north, they were similarly harvested and replanted. The properties in the red box and to the right, right along the highway, you'll see the Methodist Church location. The next slide. We have a few photos of the, the property. Of course, having been harvested not too many years back, it's, it's mostly clear. You'll see the new pine saplings already taking hold and growing. And then the, the larger trees you see there that exist are mostly on the fence lines, and there's a few scattered larger trees, a few live oaks and pines within the property. And when we're engineering the property, we hope to save some of that character and the mature trees. And that's pretty much the same view, and we can go to the next slide. The property is currently zoned PUD, and that's the area in blue. And similarly, the property across the highway is also PUD. Next slide. And corresponding to the zoning is the future land use map, which is mixed use for, for our subject property. Next slide. And as far as the topography, we've got about a 30-foot relief across the side. It's like from elevation 46 to 76, thereabouts. It's gently rolling for the most part. It's somewhat flat and a little bit lower toward the middle of the property. And then on the bottom left, in red, you'll see another natural low area. And we're going to take advantage of those for our drainage. That's, that's fine, you can keep it here. And the, the site is very, it's canvas stands, the whole site is that, very deep sandy soil, well-drained. So we're not in like a wetland-type situation. And this slide, I had mentioned that the property was zoned PUD. And one of the things in the Land Development Code of Danellin, a PUD is a requirement to have an RV use in the city limits. And the interesting thing, I don't think I've run across this before, is your PUD ordinance requires a minimum of three different uses on the property. And the other two uses are institutional use and commercial use, and those are specified in the Land Development Code. And you have to have a certain percentage of your overall property designated to those other uses. I believe it's 5% for institutional and 10% for commercial. And our total site is about 29.4 acres, by the way. You'll see the different colored areas. Those are the different various lot sizes for the RVs. Nowadays, a lot of the RVs are quite large, or people have the big trucks at Polone. There's a whole variety of things. The larger lots, we, we probably have at least half of our RV sites are tending more to the larger sites to, to meet more of the current needs. But we do have a variety of sites to accommodate a lot of different types of users. And we'll go to the next slide. This just shows in kind of a bird's eye view, gives you a little, starts to give you a better feel of what we're intending to do with the property. We'll start with the institutional use area. Both that area and the commercial use areas, those are intended by your ordinance, and it's also beneficial to the RV Resort to be open to the public. So it's something that the public would be able to enjoy as well as the RV visitors. In our institutional use, we're proposing to do a variety of sports courts, pavilion, shade pavilion, restrooms, things like that. Of course, the associated parking lot for cars and golf carts. And like I said, that will be shared with the public as well as the RV guests. And then on the, the other side of the highway frontage is our commercial use area. And again, these are all going to be areas that are open to the public. We're proposing, we wanted to propose things that would serve the RV user, but also this area of Danellin, because it's a little more remote from the downtown. So we're talking about things like a general store, a deli. We'll have the postal station for the RV guests, and of course, they'll be coming, and then they'll see the deli, and so they'll want to order from the deli. And then we'll have also some lease spaces so other commercial entities could, could conduct business there as well. And also, I think to complement the RV usage is RV and boat storage. It's not really large. I think we have maybe 25 spaces, but we're going to, you know, offer at least a certain percentage of that to the, to the public. It's amazing how many RV storage sites that I've worked on in the last year, but I just started one in Bushnell today, but they're like all over the place. It's, it's like the thing to do. But it's very popular and it's very handy to have that right adjacent to the RV Resort. And we also intend to have a mobile RV service, so when people need something repaired, they're not going to have to run out and find someone, you know, to come do their minor repairs on the RV. Let's go to the next slide. And this is just a little closer up of the highway frontage where we talked about the sports courts. We're looking at things like tennis courts, pickleball courts, bocce ball, horseshoes, and of course, the pavilion and the restrooms. We'll have nice shaded areas, things like that. And we'll go to the next slide. And then this is like the middle of the property. This is the entrance road into the, into the resort. And we intend to have nice entrance signage, perimeter fencing, landscaping. We're going to put in the, the landscape buffering that the city requires, of course. And then we'd like to put some kind of landmark structure, and for, for purposes of today, we just chose something like a windmill, something a little more rural character, but it could, it could end up being something different. And of course, this is the same road that accesses the sports courts and the commercial properties, and that'll be open to everyone. And the next slide. You'll see into the property, we've labeled the area of gate. Once you get past the, the commercial frontage uses, the RV Resort itself will be gated, so, so there'll be some separation. And they're also going to have their own set of recreation amenities inside the resort as well. Yeah, I believe I talked about uses with the deli and the store, things like that, some additional lease spaces. So something that would complement, I think, the RV and the city of Danellin. Next. And this is inside the resort, almost right in the center of all the RVs, and I believe we have 191 proposed. They're going to have their own clubhouse, a swimming pool. It may look different than this, but we wanted a pretty grand pool, a lot of shade pavilions, playground for the, for the younger folk, sports, some additional sports courts, sand volleyball. Intend to have a fenced dog park area, some paved trails. So we wanted some additional complimentary amenities for the resort guests in addition to the, the big, bigger sports courts in the front of the property. All right, and let's go to the next slide. This is a closer up of the Resort amenity area. You see, we've got a pretty large clubhouse. It's going to have a lot of breakout rooms and different activities going on in there. We have the parking for the cars in the front, but then we have a, a separate parking lot for the golf carts, because a lot of the RV guests, that's how they kind of get around amongst the RV Resort, you know? So they'll have their own separate centrally-located parking area. You'll see the playground area, which is separate from the pool area. And the pool itself, if you zoom to the last slide, it, it'll have a, a grand pavilion. It's going to have some outdoor fireplaces, outdoor dining areas, as well as some covered seating areas. So it's just going to have a, a lot of variety of, of things. So just wanted to give you a kind of an overview of what we're proposing. It's kind of a lot that we're doing on 30 acres, but I think it works kind of neat with the way your PUD ordinance is structured, and we are meeting those requirements. So I guess we do have our engineer here, if there's any of those kind of questions. Mark Schroeder. And so if you have any questions of us, or, you know, we welcome that. We'd like to come back in the future, you know, with, you know, engineered plans and, you know, get, get this thing, you know, to its final approvals. But we wanted the opportunity to get any feedback from y'all today, if there's things you have questions on, things you like, things you would like to see different, et cetera, so.
My comment would be that, just trying to understand, this is your initial obiture toward the city, your presentation right here, right now?
Yes.
So right now, this is conceptual, and it's the beginning stages of it, right? So is your business plan to present it to council first and get a reaction, rather than going to the Planning Commission and seeing what they think and then coming? Just interested why you're coming directly to the council as your first step?
Right. Well, the way, yeah, go ahead, because you had the communication on that. Yeah. Well, previously, we're doing what you asked us to do. We come back to this workshop because that's what you asked us to do. We had our share of issues in partnership before. We eliminated those, and we're here. This is on your request. And might I add, this presentation is set up, these plans have both gone through our civil engineer and our landscape architect, so it's not far off. What you're seeing is not far off from completion. What we need, our ask, is what's the next step? Because this is, this is pretty buttoned up on our end.
Okay. All right. Understood, yes. So your next, your, your next step is, we would look at this, we'd make whatever comments we'd want to make, and then from there, you would then go to the Planning Commission and start the process from there?
And of course, let's fill any questions you have now, if you have any off the top of your head.
Okay, understood. Okay.
I've been an RV'er since the mid-1980s, have owned up to 30 footer and camped pretty much year-round because of the business I was in with my husband. Kind of RV park that you are proposing, you will have no problem filling those spaces. The overflow, the lack of space at our local campground, the fact that we're on a major throughway east and west, the amount of RVs I see going down 40 and 484 on a daily basis, those people would be stopping if they had a place to stop. I don't think, there's no doubt about that. You've got a very great business plan here. My concern number one, and I know this is going to be something that's going to have to be addressed, what are you going to do with the sewage that is dumped at your park?
So as of right now, we've been in communication with FGUA. We have a positive response from them and a plan of action on how to tackle all of that, and both partners are aware of that, and there shouldn't be an issue, to be quite frank, because both of us are very aware of what we need to do on each end to see us to accomplishment. So FGUA will be handed. There shouldn't be any issues. I know there's an, you're talking about the extension coming to our property?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're, they have already, we submitted the application to them far before we came back here, because I just wanted to make sure we had our ducks in a row. It took a little extra time, plus we were surfing through COVID, and, you know, we got through that and did everything we needed to do. And after talking to FGUA, they, we completed the app with them, and they have already let us know that they could service that and work with us with no problem.
Okay, so did you use a comparable-sized number of site, number of sites RV park to determine the amount of sewage that would have to be handled? And Google is aware of that?
We over-assessed it just to be safe, because I would like to do everything on a...
Can you throw out that number, just so the public knows?
220. I mean, we were in ballpark, anywhere from 208 to 220. Absolutely. That's what, that's what we talked to them about. And we, we knew we were going to end up with less, but I would rather, you know, just be, give them the larger number so we can absolutely meet that, and that's what we did. We wanted to be prepared.
My other comment is, I did take note of the amount of trees that are being planted, which, which is great, because we are aware that trees soak up a whole lot of water in that, in the level piece of property, that's going to be generally a big concern. It would be runoff because of the percentage of the property that will be paved, and we do, are aware that the tow vehicles do leak chemicals.
Yes, ma'am.
Oil and so on. So keep us posted on how you're going to address those issues. What, what kind of surface are the RVs going to be parked on? Going to be permeable, permeable surface or grass, or what are you looking at? Or pavement?
Well, right now, we are looking at pavement, and we also have options. I'd like to get Mark to talk to one of the concepts we're looking at with even, so we're using gravity for the drainage. It's the best thing to do, but also, we're using the opportunity to have drainage underneath the pads themselves. And it's, you know, a lot of it's state-of-the-art that we're trying to put in, because we, I mean, pardon the term, we're not going to half-ass it. We're going to do our best, and we're going to do it right. And I think, Mark, could you talk to them a little bit?
We'll be meeting the requirements of the Water Management District for stormwater management. All of the water will be processed on-site. The runoff that'll be discharged from the site will not exceed the predevelopment state. So everything is going to be on-site. We're using, again, he, he said some interesting technology. I've designed several systems where they're underground instead of visible, so we can use the site, the, the areas underneath the RV, underneath the RV pad, we can use as storage for the, for the stormwater.
Keep us posted on our very interesting details. Thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Williams?
I don't have any questions. It, it sounds really good, it's a really nice plan.
Thank you.
The recreation for the public.
Sure.
There will be charges for that, right?
At this point in time, I'm going to say instinctively, we're going with no, because we want to be open, that's the point of the PUD. We also need to be open to the public free, for them to come, like the batting cages. This is a big batting or, or baseball place. So those kinds of things, they need to be able to come freely and take advantage of, of whatever we have. And in the history of Danellin, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but that type of local community and partnership is exactly what y'all have designed from day one, and we want to keep that consistent.
And how far is it from the church?
Oh, we're right beside the church, yes, but we, so far, we have a very pleasant relationship with the church, and, you know, we're, we're, we also believe that some of the patrons, you know, will go there, attend there on Sunday services. It'll be beneficial for them, us, and most of our facilities are there for them to use as well. Very important that they're going to get use out of this as well. You have to, I mean, it's not what's good for us, it's what's good for everybody when we're presenting a plan like this.
And now I'm thinking about the parking, I, I mean, it's open to the public, and we have all these people come.
Yes, come on out with your family.
Boy, should I probably be parking over at the church.
Well, I mean, if you've noticed, we have a lot of parking.
This is just what I'm making.
Yeah, well, of course, and, you know, put it this way, as we get into, dig into the issues, you'll see that, I mean, we've, we've tried our best diligently to dot every i and cross every t, but there's always changes, and it's not, it's being good with the curveball. You know, we also need to put, the end result of this project is going to be what's best for the city of Danellin, and of course, a real valuable business that's a part of the community.
Just real quick, thank y'all again for coming back at our request. I appreciate that. I think it's a great idea. I mean, we have been, you know, we... I think it's a great idea, I mean, we have been, you know, we're trying, before COVID, we were supposed to have a big bike festival come into town, and we didn't know where to put them. We didn't know where they could go. This would have fixed that problem and then some. Just real quick, just because I'm, I'm not the RV'er, I've only been to a few, all Disney World and such. But so would there be long-term RV'ers there? I mean, I know sometimes they come for two or three months, but I mean, would Fred and Jane come and be able to live there for six years?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, there will be the potential for even, you know, and we're, this is the goal, again, keep that in mind. But there will be potential for people to buy property there. And of course, we will manage it for them. But there's only a portion of that because we still wanna have, you know, most of the community develop to the RV'er. And offer, and we want, here's the thing, folks, it's 76% of RV'ers are above the age of 55. That's the crazy number that's kinda, but that has shifted tremendously over COVID and some of the changes we've seen nationwide. And now you're getting a younger, we want to appeal to everyone. We wanna have a little bit of something for everyone. And as you can see, we're spending a lot of time offering those things and doing it in the way the code says we should, the way the city feels is beneficial. And most of all, the way of, you know, the benefits that come back to the city.
And just one, not critique, idea. And Mr. Mayor, I'm going up on your ideas. We have been looking at an area possibly to put a dog park. And I know you said you were doing a dog park, geez. I didn't know the dogs would went so great now. But, but we have been talking about trying to find a place for a dog park. You'd said you were gonna do a bark, dog park. So maybe instead of a, one of the institutional areas, put an area there for a dog park, you know, that everybody could use, I guess. And I know this is gonna be a great idea because, first of all, the owners, they're gonna be neighbors of this.
Sure.
And so they're not gonna wanna have to ever look at anything that they don't wanna see every day when they're driving out of their driveway.
Sure.
So I, I can't say enough, I mean, yes, but I love to just see one house and 15 heads of cow out there, of course. But reality speaks, and I think this is a great use of that area. It's, it's right next door to the church, I can see it becoming a festival area at times. Watch out for Halloween, we'll go ahead and give you all the heads up now. We had 1,800 kids in our neighborhood, this right across the street, so I'm just saying, heads up.
Absolutely.
But I, I can't see a negative except for let's make sure the environment is taken care of.
Sure.
You know, the drains, you know, nature as much as it can be planted versus see it. But I, I can't say enough positive things about this, I'm excited to see it come to our town. So I appreciate y'all coming back upon our request. Georgina, you got a great new project to start your new career off with.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, appreciate your time, thanks for the invite. If you have anything else?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
For informative, good luck to you.
I sure do.
Yes.
I can do that.
So we got the number 11, so we don't keep Alan here. I, I didn't realize Alan was gonna be here when we put the agenda together, or I would've put that closer to the top.
Okay, very good. Council, we have another request to adjust the agenda. Or a request by Mandy to move agenda item number 11 to the present, to have a courtesy to Kimberly Horn, I guess, right?
Yes.
Any, no, discoverage? Any, we're gonna start with number 11 next. Okay, let's go with it. So we have number 11, the agreement with Kimberly Horn, Dunellen GIS Tool Development Project, correct?
Yes.
With Troy Slattery, Public Works Manager. Okay, Troy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This next topic here is something that Alan and I have been working on together, with Jan Smith as well. This project that he's about to present to you and ask your permission for us to partner up with is in relationship to all of our stormwater management components and challenges we're having throughout the city. So without wasting any more time, I'm gonna let Alan come up, explain to you what this project is and the necessity of the city.
Good evening. Good evening, and thanks for the consideration to move me up on the agenda. Alan Gary, 101 East Silver Springs Boulevard, Suite 400, Ocala, Florida.
Thank you.
The agenda item that we're talking to you about today, the GIS development tool, is a multifaceted tool that's gonna help the city meet a few, several objectives. So the city is currently partnered with the Water Management District in the development of a watershed management plan and stormwater master plan. This tool is needed to help meet some of the city's obligations in the development of that master plan. That's one of the objectives of the tool. It will allow us to consolidate the information that's being gathered by the Water Management District and get that to the city in a usable graphical interface that they can then impart their, the staff can impart their knowledge of the existing stormwater infrastructure into and help best serve both that watershed management plan and the stormwater master plan. Additionally, that information that's going to be gathered, consolidated and coalesced in this GIS database will be used, available for use in the future by the city. So one of your requirements is MS4 permitting. This tool and the information gathered in it will be used part and parcel to keep up with your MS4 permitting requirements in the long term. The last thing that this tool is gonna help you do, that this GIS tool will help you do is stay compliant with new state regulations. The Florida Clean Waterway Act was passed last year in July. One of the things that that act did was to form Florida statute 4039302, which is basically the state is requiring now cities, counties and a few other entities to develop a 20-year needs-based analysis for stormwater infrastructure. The updates are submitted every five years. The first update is due in June of next year. And this tool will be used to populate a template, I put a link in the presentation, a template for that needs-based analysis that the state has developed. We will be able to use this tool to help populate that form and get these reports submitted efficiently. To give you an idea of what this will look like, last year, we did something similar. We developed a very similar tool for the City of Crystal River. This is an example of kind of what the interface is gonna look like. It's gonna give Troy primarily and Georgiana the ability to comment and make notations on the information that we gather with the Water Management District project. So we're imparting that information that the city has. We are also updating them on the progress of that watershed management plan. This is the first interface. With this, they can see the layout of the stormwater system, the basins within the city, flood-prone areas. If there is historical knowledge of existing flood-prone areas that we're not reflecting, that's, in the development of this tool, that's where we would reflect that information, you know? There's a lot of historical knowledge that staff and residents have and you all have, will have the ability to make sure that that gets reflected and held in memoriam with this tool. Next slide. This is gonna give you the access and the ability to view different layers. So this is a snapshot of what types of data might be made available. And it also has the ability for, most of the data entry is gonna be done by us, as your consultant. But this also will give the option for city staff to add data if that need arises. Next slide. This slide here, what I'm showing on this slide, we didn't do a stormwater tool for Crystal River. We did, we did a water and wastewater tool. So what we're showing here with the line work is, is the, sort of the end result. There's a, a network of information that's developed throughout the city. You can, we can zoom in on it, we can click on the type of pipe that's there, that's shown. We can see when it was installed, the condition of it. All the information that we would gather will be housed in a, this, within this tool, which is a, basically a data, a graphical interface in a database. This is a more zoomed-in version of that previous slide, so you can kind of see what it looks like on the street level. Again, this is water and wastewater, because what we did for Crystal River was, was utility-based, not stormwater-based. But what you would see would be similar line work indicating culverts, swales, outfalls, stormwater structures, flood-prone areas. This is the type of information we're gonna be showing with this. Next slide. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to take any.
What's that?
Appreciate your time.
I just have a question, this, this study or this procedure you're talking about, would that encompass the entire city or is that to a certain area?
It's, the, the study that the Watershed Management District is doing? It's actually, it's the entire city, but it's also a surrounding area. So it's, it's the, it's called the Dunellen Watershed Management Plan, but it encompasses a watershed that's larger than the City of Dunellen itself. So I guess to answer your question, yeah, it's the entire city.
So the benefit of this, Troy, would be to you to have this done? So when we do our roadwork, we already have this done ahead of time?
Absolutely. The project that I've been working on for the last three years with Swift Month and the engineers is where most of this data is coming from. This will allow us not only to access it and view it, but to update it or to give input as we run into certain scenarios. Good example, Cherokee Circle, where we've had the recent flooding and it took us weeks just to track down where that stormwater was going. Now that we've identified that issue and it is a flood potential, the data will be uploaded. It's shared information, state will be able to see this, the engineers will be able to see it, and I'll be able to see it, rather than just screenshots or tidbits of information shared. So this really streamlines our ability to not only file our reports with the state, but to update our information. So just like Alan said, the Dunellen area project that we're in is also doing county areas and state-owned assets. So rather than just seeing mine in there separately, I get to see it all together. Tremendous.
And so how often is this study repeated? In other words, if you, if you do it this year or next year, whenever you're gonna do it, how long is the data that you obtain usable before you have to do it again?
It's, so the, the data in the GIS tool is usable in perpetuity and it would be updated. Once we, once we finish this and the watershed management analysis, we would turn everything over to the city. That data could then just be updated as, as Troy and Public Works, as they have ongoing projects. It could be regularly updated, and that basically checks a lot of boxes for your MS4 permitting requirements. The other report, the new regulation that I was mentioning, that report that has to be turned in in June, that is every five years, that's an update that's done every five years. And you, if, when this system's in place and maintained, you could basically just print out what your projects are from the report, from the system.
Now, what is, what is the responsibility of the city to get this done? What, from this report, what does the city do?
You mean the needs-based analysis report?
Do we have to check off on it, write a letter, do we have to come up with some certain funding? Is there anything for the city to do to implement this?
For the needs-based analysis? The only thing you would need to do is that, like I said, that, the template that the state provided, we would help you populate that. I've read through it, I, I'm confident that the information we're gonna be gathering for this tool will translate well into that document. We would populate that template, bring it to you all for approval. It, it actually, by state, by the state guidelines, it needs to be submitted to the county. And then the county is gonna collect the reports from Ocala, Dunellen, Bellevue, all of the cities that are within Marion County, and send one cohesive document up to the state from the county.
I understand, and potentially, what would be the financial expense to the city to be?
Oh, even though the regulation, it kind of came up on the radar, we're gonna, we'll be able to do it for what's on this current IPO. I don't think we'd have any additional cost.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just real quick, so just like we just heard about the RV park potential coming in. So if we have this program in place, this GIS tool, will be, whatever they engineer give us, we can just add this in when the lines go out there and those kind of things for the stormwater, right?
Yeah, we would request from them, what is called a shape file of their stormwater system. And if they're able to give us that, we can, it's, yeah, it just pops right in.
So that's, so for any new development that we have, a new wah-wah or, you know, whatever, that would be, awesome.
Very good.
And new expense, that's what I like the most.
Yep.
Extra expense.
Any other comments? All right, thank you very much, very good, good stuff.
Safe travels home.
Thank you, thank you again for moving up.
Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Thanks, Troy.
Ms. Roberts, we go back to which, which item now? Oh, yes, Troy.
Mr. Mayor, on that particular item, council agreeing to put that on consent agenda to sign the agreement with Kimberly Horn to perform the services.
I would say yes.
Fine, there's no expense.
Oh, yes.
Does, turning into look at it? Okay, just checking.
Staff and council, it looks like it's just a work order, project order number per their master contract.
Okay, please.
Seems to be adequately described, just looking at it, up-hand in preparation for the meeting. I don't see any issues.
Okay, very good. So Mandy gonna put it on the consent agenda? All right, Georgina, it looks like we finally, if we'll back to you. So for you that are watching this ping pong ball tonight, we are, we're at number-
Number eight is on me.
Number nine, eight? Eight, no, so we're not to you yet.
Eight is police, nine is first.
So we're not to you yet, sorry about that. All right, you're getting ready. I can just lead into this as a continuation of the discussion set we have had on the police facility. As council knows and the public knows, that Soul Harbor Church is currently on the market. And council is looking at other options where we may go with us. Two things that are out there right now, one that we have discussed are the two lots, one and two lots on Powell Road as a possible site. The other possible site that has come up within the last couple of weeks is actually the Gruff's Restaurant Site with the parking. One of the things that staff has made clear to me in my discussions of this that before we move forward on anything, we have to have the properties appraised. Governmental regulation usually is that you can't pay more for a piece of property than what a fair appraisal is. So if either one of these considerations, those lots on Powell Road or if the Gruff's site would be something that council would be interested in, we would have to get an appraisal and see what the appraisal, how it balances against the current asking price. So that's pretty much what this is. Mandy, if you wanna add anything in addition to that, please do.
No, sir, before I can, I just wanted to make sure that that's the way council wanted to move forward, is to go ahead and get an appraisal of the sites.
And you're figuring the combined fee to appraise both sites would be $5,000 or like, plus?
It's going to be, is that gonna be $57.50?
$57.50.
For both? For both.
But let me, and just real quick, the assessed value is from the tax records, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so usually, they're about 80% less than as rough ballpark. That's what we estimate, just FYI, y'all. You don't want to have the true value being paid on taxes. But did we have a price that Gruff's was looking at, wanting to?
When we were approached at first, he had said a million for the property, the building. When we were approached at first, he had said a million for the property, the building. And of course, our response to him was, well, we have to take this to council. We can't really negotiate before we've been given that direction. And we were approached once more and he said he was willing to reduce it to nine and a half, 9.5. But I didn't make him aware that we could not pay more than the appraised value. We have to have the property appraised before we can enter into any kind of negotiations.
So really, the the question is regardless of what its asking price is, we need to know, two things we need to know is number one, do we have the funds at hand to go forward? And secondly, is the asking price equivalent to the appraised appraised value? If it's not, we just simply can't go forward if if he's asking more than the appraisal is.
Unless he's willing to come down to the appraised value.
Correct. So what I I think this is, is to give council direction on whether they we want them to go forward and at least get an appraisal on this so we know if these two options are something that we can consider.
I mean, look, I think Gruff's would be a wonderful location. We've got the parking, we have the large building. I don't know if Troy has gone in there yet and looked at it from a builder viewpoint or from a building maintenance about, I mean, because when we went into the other location, you know, we brought in a contractor and an engineer and before we bought them to look at them, to give us a ballpark of what we were looking at. And then as we got even deeper into it, we had more people go in and give us a lower price, which was wonderful. So if we're starting off at a million dollars roughly, 50,000, I'm friends, I'm not sure where, again, I think it's a great location. I love it for for all the right reasons. But how would the three of y'all who who campaigned on, we're not going to spend a million point two, be able to look those people in the eye and say, we're going to spend a million now? And I can't imagine the cost of renovations being less than 200,000. You know, that's y'all's ballpark. I think I would love it if I had two million, you know, one and a half million dollars to spend on it. That would be my first choice. My second choice, we all know, would be, and then my third choice would be Powell Road. Because again, we're spending on Powell Road, same amount of money we already have in our building that we own. So that's my two cents into this. And I just don't, again, I think Gruff's is an excellent excellent choice, but I just don't know about the cost. And and before we go and spend money on even doing appraisals, I'd rather us have some hard figured numbers to say, this is what it's going to cost if it's 950,000, 1 million, or 800,000, this is how much it's going to cost to renovate that building. And I think we can get a ballpark estimate in there pretty fast. That's it.
Very good. Ms. Cabbage?
Well, the figures pretty much line up, even though we don't have a refit assessment. I would I would like to see what the appraised values are going to come to. Because we're we're going to be adding an asset to the city, whether it be out on Powell Road or Gruff's. I think Gruff's has already got all that infrastructure that's needed, the parking lot, it's got a great lobby entrance and so on. And I'd like to hear from Chief McQuaid on how he sees that building as a police station and as far as how that building is laid out internally, what will have to be done as far as compartmentalizing it for offices, locking up for security reasons, that evidence room and so on, shower area and so on. So we need to hear from our police chief definitely as to
Okay, we can do that.
What he thinks.
We'll invite Chief up if he's want. Ms. Williams?
Just a word, location, I'd like to see what's the phrase.
In response to Vice Mayor, I'm totally on board with her thinking, her her line of thinking is harmonious with how I look at things. We're kind of in the same situation with Gruff's as far as the process. What you what's going to happen here is someone's going to say, well, I can't really give you a price, what it would cost to retrofit until, this is the way it has been going, maybe it won't go this way, until we get an architect in there and you have to pay an architect before. And so we kind of get into the the same thing of putting up money. Gruff's, the location with the parking that's there, setback from the road, if it was doable out of all the sites and locations, that that's absolutely a home run. So it just comes down to what really what this is boiling down to is what can the city afford? What can the city do? Can we do it? It does look like to be very forthright that the number that we keep coming up with, by the time you purchase a piece of property, whether you build new or whether you retrofit, when you include all the goodies, the parking and whatever, it looks like any way you slice the turkey, this is going to cost a million dollars. Everything we come, when you add it all up, when you add it all up, it's a million dollars. So I think what this council and the city is grappling with is the idea that we want to do something, but we do, you know, we're, you know, where where's the million dollars going to come from? How are we going to come up from million dollars and how do we justify a million dollars? Just a couple of ideas on these two pieces of property. The Powell Road property kind of simplifies things. You're buying a vacant lot. You're hiring a company, a prefab company that builds new. They send out the project managers and they manage it. There's no architect, there's none of that. Buy the property, go, chief submits exactly his plans, exactly the way he wants a brand new building. And we've been told in six months or less, the police are sitting in a brand spanking new building built exactly the way we want it. The retrofit idea goes back to, you know, it's not simple. We're buying a building, we have to go in and gut it, we've got to, we've got to hire people, we've got to have someone oversee oversee the project, architects and whatever. And it makes it really gooey because we don't have numbers. We kind of have a number. Right now, we know that a building built to chief's needs is, the quote we got is somewhere around $750,000. So right there, we know that number and we also know what a lot would cost. So there's a comfort level, we kind of have control of these numbers. When you get into the retrofit, it's just sort of like, okay, what are we really getting into here? How complicated is this going to be in this environment of construction where it's hard to get people to come out and do things and jobs are delayed for months? You can get into that. With the Vice Mayor, as far as the location and the possibilities of Gruff's, it's outstanding. I understand the building is 8,000 square feet. There definitely is a lot of room in there to do alternate things possibly. There's more than enough parking. It fits our purpose. And it's it's a whole different set of dynamics, how you get from where we are today to how where we want to to be. But we can't, we can't go forward until we have have certain amounts of information.
Just one caveat, don't forget that when we take Gruff's off, if we take Gruff's off the block, we're taking $14,000 out of the tax base. 14.5, 14.8? So just, I mean, that's just an FYI.
So what this discussion is, isn't really at this point to make a decision what to do with a police station. What staff is asking, since these two properties are out there specifically, one that we've already discussed, the lots, staff's looking for a direction if you want to go forward. The next thing they need to do is find out what they're appraised at and see if the appraisals match or are close to the asking prices. And it looks like it's going to cost for the two of them combined, it'll be around $6,000 to get it appraised.
Seven. Well, no, six, 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 sorry. 57.50. Almost 6,000. Just shy of 6,000.
So we're not going to make a decision tonight, but we can decide what we want to do as far as we can put this on the consent agenda or we can just put it as an agenda item for this coming meeting.
Mandy, did you speak with appraisers? They give you a turnaround time?
Four, six weeks.
That's what I was about to say, it's going to take about, I was going to say two months. So, okay.
My my feeling is we need to go forward and put this on the consent agenda and let staff get the appraisal so we know what to do.
I concur with that.
Ms. Williams? So that's a yes? Vote as a consensus.
I know, I know. I, you know, I just think I'd like to know where we're going to get a million dollars no matter what. So if Jan can maybe, you know, fund a million dollars for us, report back on Monday, I'd appreciate it. That's a joke. But I know you'd do it if you had to.
Jan, I know we do have the money. We do have the money, but it gets into our reserves and all this sort of stuff. So you you've gone over this real well. If you want to just give us a real quick summary, we can listen again.
Yes, sir. We do have the cash in our reserve. Do we want to deplete our major reserve at this point? I think during the discussion, we should talk about financing. At least part of the purchase.
Right.
Or part of the rehab. Just enter it into a discussion and see what a lender would allow us, what an interest rate would be, and move forward. The revenue source that we would pledge, the only revenue source that we really have to pledge for any kind of a bond issue would be the one set sales tax.
Or red money.
So we would not be financing the entire purchase because over the next three years, we only have about $750,000 coming in. Because this year, the monies have already been budgeted.
Yeah. So Jan, the question would be then, I mean, let's just really simplify it. We find that the appraisals are within what the properties can be bought for. So we've eliminated that obstacle. We still have the issue of the possibility of needing the best part of a million dollars to make this happen. So then the question comes, really, is this doable at all?
In my opinion, if financing can come through for part of it, absolutely. Unless you want to deplete pretty much one of your major reserves, which is still an option. I don't recommend that because we have a pending grant for Denellen Heights that will need part of part of that money for, at least in the short term. But we do have, if, let's say you take, let's just say 50% of what's needed to get the police department up and running. You're going to, we're hopefully going to be selling Soul's Harbor Church in the near future. That could go back to replenish the reserve where we take 50% of the money from. If you sell the police department, that could also go back into that reserve. So I think it would just be a matter of a little bit of juggling in the short term as well as financing in the short term. Does it have to be a long term financing? Absolutely not, it doesn't.
Right.
It would just be something that would be negotiated with the lit.
Because when you when you add it up, the numbers continue to kind of come up similarly. Like the Gruff's property, you don't have to pay the parking. That's a that's a couple hundred thousand right there. If you buy the lots along with the building for 750, you still have to put the parking in and you still have to put the drainage in and all that other stuff. So, you know, you this number just keeps coming up for pretty similar, no matter how you slice it and dice it.
But either way, I think it is doable.
Yeah.
But I think we should, you know, at least entertain the discussion.
Well, then I would say the the task to council is just buck up and say, we can come up with a million dollars. We have the way to do that. And this is what we're going to decide to do to make it happen. And let's let's put our heads together and if we think that's the best thing, let's let's go forward. Because I think this these this money is all looking pretty similar to me, no matter what we're trying to do. So the question is, council, what do you want to do with these two? We already have three people that say they want to go forward to it. Vice Mayor, if you want to make, if you want to say yes or no, you know, it's up to you. It's pretty much already decided. With with doing the appraisal.
Consensus is the consensus.
Okay. Ms. Odom, we'll put that. Yes. I'm almost afraid to do this. Is it is it your turn yet?
Now it is my turn.
Usually, usually I do that to Jan all the time. Okay, we are now at, I promise we're at number nine. Okay.
Yeah. Well, the CRA board developed a facade grant program which will assist in the distribution of funds to incentivize both residential and our commercial property owners to improve their exterior appearance of their properties. And so staff has created three options to disperse this funds. And option number one will assist 12 properties and the need and the need to be broken down into sections. Basically, it was broken down into four quadrants to be able to encompass the $100,000 that we have available right now for dispersment. And so if in this specific option, we have 12 properties that are going to be, that are going to be able to do projects with these funds. And I've I've explained in the in the chart how that would be broken down for for the first option. And then the second option would be more concise in the historic district and it would be broken down in a different way so that we can basically have a greater concentration of assistance. We're going to expand to 20 grants within this option. And this is the option that I that staff would recommend best because it's going to focus in just one section of the city as opposed to the entire city. And and we can actually impact more projects this way as opposed to the other ones, which will be very specific because we don't have enough funds. We only have 100,000 to to dispersed. The third one basically is the entire CRA district. But then again, we have only five homes that are going to, five properties that are going to be, you know, that are going to take advantage of this. If we do the option two, we can tackle more. If we do the option two, we can tackle more, more projects. We can bring this, this facade improvement to the area, to the historic district area, which is going to be the basis for the Main Street project down the line. So it's going to help in, in every way. So our recommendation is that you approve the second option, so that we can move forward to, to approve those, the policies, and, and start providing the grants to the residents.
Georgina, so these grant options, they'll still have to, will they have to pay out, out front for these, and then get the $5,000 after, or whatever the amount is, after they provided us with paid invoices?
Yes.
That's the only thing, and, and I know I've talked to Jan a couple of times about this, I'd love to figure out a way that we could do it, where, you know, if they needed to have it paid by us for the work, and I guess there's just not a way to do that? Okay, never mind. I still would like that, because I think that would make it an easier process for people to spend the $5,000, unless, of course, the vendors, they come directly to us, ask to be paid?
That's not a, in my opinion.
Yeah, it's not a good idea?
I don't believe it's a good idea, because we have not vetted those contracts.
Okay, that's fine.
Our requirements are pretty stringent.
Okay, that's cool.
Insurance and whatnot, so.
All right, but I, I, again, I was just trying to think of how to help the person that needs the assistance, to get the assistance to the work, so that's fine.
The property owner would have to just put, do the invoice.
The property owner would have, or, or the designated applicant would have to do the project, and then come to us with invoices, so that we can pay them back. It's going to be a reimbursement.
Ms. Cubbage, do you have any, anything to say?
No, I don't, no, I do not.
That's a great idea.
All right, so what you're recommending is, the $100,000 we have, split it up into $25,000 grants.
Into, into $25,000 grants?
Right.
And given to 20 property, properties.
Properties in the historic section.
Within the historic section?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. We've made comments. I think it's, I've looked at this pretty thoroughly, I'm all for it. So, so do we put this on the regular agenda?
Well, there are a couple things. Both of the plans have been, we have recommendations from the historic board and staff to amend the two programs, because currently, the, the grant program for the historic district is 2,500, is the max. So we would have to reapprove that document with the change. Georgina, I'm not real sure what y'all changed in the CRA program, grant. If you would like to maybe point that out, because that's also, if there's been changes made to it, you have to reapprove it. And Andrew, that would have to be approved by the CRA board, correct?
Yes, it would have to be approved by the CRA board, and it would definitely have to be in line with the, the grant program that's in the plan. Otherwise, that would have to become part of the plan. I have to look at it again, I don't, I don't know that that would be necessary, but in any case, yes, it would need to be approved by the CRA board.
Okay, and you have a CRA meeting on Monday, five o'clock.
Okay.
So we could bring the grant program documents to you for approval of the changes. And also, the option two that Georgina is talking about, because right now, we have both grants, so if you're in the historic district, you can apply for the historic district grant. If you're in, anywhere in the CRA, you can apply for the CRA grant. But what she's recommending is that the CRA board or council approve restricting that in this fiscal year, just to the historic district, so we can get more done in a more focused area. And we would not consider any grants outside of the historic district for the remainder of this fiscal year.
We're talking about a CRA board meeting at 5:00 Monday?
Yes.
And that falls within our requirements for notifications and whatever? Or there's no requirement for any notification?
It's already been notified. Well, your, your CRA board meetings are held quarterly, in the second month of every quarter.
Okay.
And so it's, yes, it's been advertised on the calendar for a while.
All right, do we have a, everybody in agreement, we'll put that as a CRA board meeting Monday, 5:00?
Our attorney doesn't have any problems with us doing this, admitting CRA areas?
I'd, I'd have to review that, I think that there, there could be an issue with consolidating, you know, an area within the CRA, and only allowing certain areas within the CRA eligible for grants and excluding other properties. They're CRA grants, so that would be something to, to look at for certain.
So how would we, how would we deal with this? Would we just schedule a CRA meeting, and then if you advise that we can't do it that way, just call the meeting off?
Well, it sounds like you have a regular CRA meeting coming up, which you, you have to hold so many times per year, that's part of it, it's advertised on the website. But you can have a special CRA meeting, which can be, you know, essentially part of a, almost like part of a council meeting, either immediately preceding, or moving into it during. So if it's not something that could happen on Monday, it's certainly something that you all could do and, and visit soon at a special CRA meeting.
But you can tell us on Monday if we can do it or not. We ask you to, please, and thank you. Well, we can go ahead and put the two program documents on the agenda for approval, and if this option is not an option, you just wouldn't vote on it.
Okay.
But you've still approved the recommended changes that the historic board and staff has made to the, the program, so that it makes them more attractive, so that people want to follow.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Georgina, anything else on number nine?
Uh, no.
Okay. Number 10.
The city has been awarded a grant from the Department of Economic Opportunities to implement priority action items identified in the Historic Enhancement Plan that was presented to council on March 17 of 2021. And this grant will position the city with the flexibility to support redevelopment within the historic district. I've provided a scope of work and, and some documentation, I don't know, Mandy, if you can pull that up. Um, scope of work, deliverables, and action points have been identified for council, and staff kindly requests that you approve the grant agreement to be provided.
Mayor, I have to.
We don't actually have the grant in, in.
We do. No, it is pending. Right. So what we would be requesting council is that, the grant is still pending, it's DEO to be compiled, we submitted a scope of work, and we would be asking that you all approve, authorize the mayor to execute the grant agreement when it's received. This agreement actually expires, I believe it's in Ju-, in June. It takes a lot to put these things together, and unfortunately, they approve it, they award it, but then they still have work to do. So we, we're hoping we have at least six months to get this all done, which should be doable.
You're asking for the council to authorize the mayor to sign?
Yes, and, and there is no city match. It's a grant in the amount of $37,500 for us to hire a consultant to help accomplish the scope of work.
I have a number of comments.
Okay. Yes.
First of all, we accepted the grant, but we don't have to accept the product that Ken Metcalf offered us. And I can, I have a, a number of reasons why we should not accept Ken Metcalf's product.
This is a different agreement.
This is a different grant.
It's a different grant?
This is, this is completely different. This does, this is a second part of that grant. And this talks about, I believe, like zoning overlays, and
Right.
I'm not sure what else. Let's see. I do not have the scope of work in front of me.
There's some, Georgina put together some short-term action points here, as you can see on the screen, or in your council backup. But these are, these are some of the things that we would work, community development, would work with the planner on accomplishing in this second phase of this grant. Just what Ken Metcalf presented, and the first was just his conceptual plan, not something that we had to necessarily act on, but in the second phase of that, it, it does provide for the amendment to the comp plan, and a zoning overlay, and what works in. Georgina, I think that, wasn't there something in here that had to do with wayfinding signs and things?
It's, it's part of it, and Main Street is mentioned too, as part of the, the development.
And wayfinding signage is in the budget for this year, and that was a continuation of the economic development strategy. So it, it does go hand in hand. So as far as accepting what Ken, like Ken Metcalf presented, this is like an offshoot. It's not necessarily development law 41, it's, it's positioning the city for the future, is what this is allowing.
My, my objection is that these action points that Ken Metcalf pretty, I think he offhanded without discussion with important persons of our city, include the Historic Preservation Board. I had a conversation with Dane Myers. Even though Metcalf says that he, he gives credit to certain parties for conferring with him, those conferences actually did not occur, for example, with the Historic Preservation Board. Dane Myers said his conversation with Metcalf occurred in an off-chance encounter in a park, in the City Hall parking lot. These recommendations do not fit what is purposeful for this city to continue developing the city's historic district. That is the central focus of this enhancement plan. It's called Boomtown Historic District Enhancement Plan. This short-term action point, the two that I adamantly just think are off the wall, and I have had a number of citizens call me to discuss this, and in person also, as I let people know what was going on. For example, the second point, discuss with Citrus County a joint boat ramp east of the bridge over the Withley Coochie River. Ken Metcalf's idea is that we take City Hall, move it somewhere else, and make this a, a village center, and close the boat ramp down. I mean, that, that idea is unacceptable, yet it's part of the short-term action points. Now, why would we want to accept these points if they are, number one, unviable, undoable, and make no sense for the benefit of the city? A report, a study is supposed to supply quantified data and precedence. And he mentioned cities such as Bradenton, 56,000 people. They have a riverfront walkway 1.5 miles. They have a stadium that was built for $30 million for a professional baseball team to have spring training. That's not a precedent for Denellen. Another precedent was the land. He gave us photos of two-story buildings. He photoshopped this off of the land's community visitor, visitor site, and placed it on 41. Those two-story buildings in the land were built in the 1920s. They existed. Yeah, his point was to go ahead and build two-story buildings up and down 41, and figure out where to put the parking, when there's a, that, that land is a narrow piece of property. Anything that is built there, parking's probably going to go, have to go to the rear of those shops, and then we have to deal with the railroad. So that, that's not a doable. Build two-story buildings? No, we do not compare with the land, okay?
We, we get it, we understand.
Right.
The point I'm trying to figure out from you is, you are wanting to move away from Metcalf?
Absolutely.
Okay, so.
We did, we did not get a product that is workable for our city.
So let's accept, let's, we already know everything you've said. All right, we know that.
Okay.
So what do we do if we move from Metcalf to, you're, you're suggesting moving in another direction?
I, I suggest that we tell DEO, we, we are not happy with his product. That it does not offer information that is, fits our city of Denellen. And again, this was for the Historic District Enhancement Plan, and his ideas move away from that historic district. You look at the map of the boundaries where our historic district is. He wants to take our commercial corridor of 41 and make that a gateway, which is fine, but
Okay, so.
It's not up where our historic district lays.
So let me get just this, let, let's say, Jan, Mandy, that you had a unanimous council right here that agreed with this coverage. What would we do?
We would have to hire a planner. To do, to do the same thing that Ken, well, well, not the same thing that he did, but, but to, that's where the funding goes, is the planner to do the review of the comprehensive plan, and the zoning overlay, and then there was, um, there was something in there that had to do with them doing like brochures and things like that, to invite.
He said a, a letter of interest, is his quote, letter of interest to potential investors.
Which is not a good idea.
That's a great idea, okay, but with a plan that's workable for the city.
If it's not with Ken, we'd have to contract someone else to do the work. So, but let me ask you this, because this part of the grant that we have been awarded, this 37,5, yes ma'am, that is giving us not the project that, or the ideas that Ken gave us, correct?
It's not, it's not implementing anything.
Anything. So it would just enhance doing the, the new project, the new thing that we're going to be going.
Main Street.
Thank you, couldn't get that big word out of my mouth, Main Street. So it would help us get with Main Street, correct? And work with them, and it would, it would be nothing with the report that Ken gave us.
You're not, you're not making, you're not building two-story buildings.
We're not taking down City Hall, right?
Yeah, changing billboards.
Not going to shut down the boat ramp.
Okay. So this is basically just an infrastructure type of grant to help us with the zoning overlays and those types of things?
Yes, just to position the city for the future, because 10 years from now, the seat, a seated council may want to move the boat ramp, may want to move City Hall. Just may, I say may. And it's just to position the city, give, give the next council's flexibility for the future.
I'm not sure, well, how do you define flexibility? Because council make, council makes decisions based on what's happening at the moment, and what is, what is affordable, what grants can be.
Absolutely, but if this is going to affect the comprehensive plan, whatever changes are implemented as a result of that. This is a little bit beyond my area of expertise, as far as the comprehensive plan. But that's all this is. It's not to, like I said, it's not to bury power. Like Mary, like Mandy said, it's not to build two-story buildings. But if our comprehensive plan allows a two-story building along 41, that's what I mean by flexibility, just as a hypothetical. But if our comprehensive plan allows a two-story building along 41, that's what I mean by flexibility, just as a hypothetical example.
I don't, I don't understand why we need a report when we reach that moment that says Ken Metcalf made these suggestions. Right. Ken, what's he, who, the 37,000, what part of that 37,000 is Metcalf getting?
The whole, the whole.
The whole Saban. And basically, basically got, we, what we got is a photo essay, okay? I counted the numbers. If you look at photos and you look at the print, what was offered, okay? I'm familiar with grants and how businesses who are awarded grants, what they produce for the amount of money they are awarded. This to me is something, and I'm serious, and I've talked to people about this, that a senior in high school could have done. They can do photo shopping. They could have interviewed people, and they could have come up with these ideas. They could have possibly come up with better ideas. So I don't think our mayor should accept this. He should not sign off on this grant. Except this, maybe we need to go back to DOE and say, is there's another party that we can contract?
That was already paid for.
Yeah, that's gone.
That money's, it's paid for? That's paid, then what are we signing for? What's Mayor, Mayor White gonna sign for?
It's another grant.
Another grant.
This is a brand-new grant.
Okay. And how does this that has been paid for gonna tie into that grant?
From what I understand, it is a continuation. In what capacity, I can't really speak to it.
It's like a second phase of that grant. So there were some things that were identified in the first phase. That you, you don't have to implement those things, but the advantages to going with the second phase of the grant is what, the way it's been explained to me is basically the zoning overlay and what they would provide, the consultant would provide as far as a letter of interest, sort of a packet that they would provide with a letter of interest to potential developers. That's the best I can describe it. Georgina, do you have any better understanding of it?
Well, it is my understanding that this, just for, for that overlay that, that Mandy just explained. And I think it would be beneficial to us to have that on our, on our pocket. I mean, it's, it's not really, I don't think it's really hurting us in any way. To the contrary, we're gonna have that, that list of developers that we might be able to recruit in later on. So this is not gonna be in any way, shape, or form, in my opinion, negative to the city. I think it's gonna bring a positive outcome. That's how I.
So Ms. Cabbage, I'm, I'm trying to follow. I mean, I'm listening to you very closely. What I'm hearing is you're totally dissatisfied with the first portion of what Mr. Metcalf did. And we already paid 35,000 for that packet that you're showing up. So that's already done, whether you like it or not. It's not, your exception now seems to be to continue on with a second grant for 37,000.
I wanna see if this grant has been accepted.
And then to use the same person that will be kind of a building on this report that you ate.
Yes.
And spending 37,000 and additional, you're looking at, that what are we, we're basically gonna come with nothing to show for it.
We don't have to use the same person.
So that seems to be what her issue is, the person.
How is this grant gonna be bound through the second phase? Right, what, what are?
But did you hear? We don't have to use Mr. Metcalf.
We don't have to go on with Metcalf. We can hire another consultant, do some research, see what city, other cities have, who they have used.
Is there another consultant within the firm or? So what, how, how would that gum this up? We have something that's done now. You go outside, you hire someone else. They start from scratch or do they try to build?
They would. They would have to start from scratch and get familiar with what was done in the first grant, the scope of work that's tied to this grant now, and then move forward.
Yeah, I can, I dig what Ms. Cabbage is saying. I think what Ken Metcalf had done in that first one, he came up with something that I don't think there's any chance of us implementing even a minor portion of what he has suggested.
I think council has to keep in mind, and I was not in any discussion, but Ken, as contracted with the city, would have gone forward based on a scope of work, developed most likely with Lonnie and possibly with the city administrator, and maybe even with council to, to a certain extent at the time. I don't have any documents to support my statement. I can only assume Ken would not just go off on his own.
Right.
There would have had to be a discussion for this, to prepare the scope of work. So, and this is just my opinion, I don't think Ken deserves all the blame that's being placed on him. If he was directed by city personnel in whatever capacity, he went with his understanding. And I think he worked on that one packet, and I'm not trying to excite.
You know, I, I actually, actually understood that. That's how this sold.
Okay.
Okay, so wait, wait a second, let me speak. So Jan's not, we're getting away from the blame game, right? Ken Metcalf did what he was told to do.
Yes, sir.
And what he came up with is something that we feel is of no help to us whatsoever. Jan's point is the second grant, to give it to Ken so he can continue to attach a new grant to the work he's done previously. It's just throwing good money after bad.
But maybe in discussing with Ken, him knowing what council doesn't like about what was presented and what he would do to move forward with this grant could be two different things.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we please not have the citizens cuss?
Okay, well, I, I didn't hear if there's any comments. Okay, so what, what are you asking? Right now, council is listening very closely to Ms. Cabbage. You're asking that we go forward with this letter of authorization with Mr. Metcalf. She is suggesting that she's not against going forward with the grant. She doesn't wanna go forward with him because she doesn't have confidence in his work.
And that would be council's consensus. The grant doesn't bind us to Ken Metcalf. The grant binds us to do a project. It is up to us to hire whomever council decides through an RFP because of the dollar amount, a consultant to help us move forward with this project.
So would that be, that would be in essence firing Mr. Metcalf from this point forward or just taking him off of this particular project?
He's not even on the, on the project anymore at this point. He was done with that, that first grant.
So whether it's Mr. Metcalf or someone else, we, well, basically then with Ms. Cabbage and a half an hour discussion is just saying, let's hire someone else other than Mr. Metcalf for the next.
We have reached the point that I hope we would. Thank you.
And if there's no downside to that.
The only downside is time. Yeah, the amount of time we have, because I don't believe we can get an extension on the grant. But if we accept the grant and we move forward with it.
I think the purchasing policy allows the city manager or their designated, it's written today, to hire a consultant without having to go bid.
I'm looking.
That would be my recommendation.
Ms. Ms. Cabbage, I would, I share your feelings. And if there's no downside to us getting someone else to go forward, I would support that.
Absolutely. That's true. There's other people out there that do the same thing, possibly better.
Okay, what do we need to do with this before we move on?
I'd say take a vote on Monday with Mr., with Attorney Andrew Hand's guidance, what you can do, Ms. Mandy and Georgina.
Yeah, we would, we'd probably put this on the regular council meeting agenda. And if council decides to move forward, it would just be a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the final grant agreement. And, and if we're able to, after researching the purchasing policy, authorize city clerk to hire the consultant.
Yes, Mandy is exactly right. There is a, under other services, following services may be retained by the city manager. Now the city clerk, provided the purchase is made in the best interest of the city, and the city manager advises city council the services have been retained. And under that, Part A, services purchased with government loans, grant monies, gifts bequest or donations if applications article makes it impracticable to timely meet the requirements, conditions, or limitations attached to the grant money. So that would be absolutely fine. In this case, it's even more fine because the purchase hasn't been made yet, and you're essentially directing the city clerk to do. That would work.
So we're gonna put this on the agenda Monday, correct?
Thank you.
Ms. Cabbage, hats off to you for hanging in there and getting your point across.
Thank you for bearing with my blabbing. Thank you.
Once we got an understanding of it, it wasn't as complicated as it originally seemed. All right.
Yes.
Okay, number 12.
This is a standard lease that we have every year with Clark's Outdoor Decorations for the Christmas lights that go on the light poles around the city. Price has not changed. I do believe that's exactly what it was last year.
Okay. My only comment on that is, you know, when, when you talk to them, I know they have lots of different lights. You know, if we can get a couple different ones rather than the same ones on the same post every year, I mean, I can almost tell you right now where, where the candy cane's gonna be.
The drummer boy.
When I talk to them, I'll tell them to start in reverse. But yeah, I'll mention that to them, but they play that to take it around.
And there's one candy cane that has green and a red light out, and I've seen it for two years.
Okay, tell them to test the lights. Nancy Young will be happy about her Christmas lights going back out.
Yes. All right, Troy, we're still with you, number 13.
Okay, number 13. Counsel, this is my request to purchase a new vehicle for the Public Works Department. We do have them in the budget. We have the first truck that we received authorization for last year will be delivered in the first couple of weeks of December. So we'd like to get the order in for the next work truck to start upgrading it. It's on a state bid contract. It's a Duval Ford. It's for a three-quarter ton, four-door Ford pickup truck, two-wheel drive, standard eight-foot bed. Nothing fancy added to the package except for our roadside strobe lights while we're out working.
Do they have runners?
Say it again.
They have runners?
I don't believe so.
No, I, I, I mean, just, I mean.
Not unless it comes as part of a standard, but it's not built, it's not on the back. But it does come with a trailer tow package, the trailer brake controller, and spray-on bed liner, and the backup counter. That's all part of the standard package.
And this was part already in the budget and talked about, correct?
Yes.
Consent?
Consent agenda? Simple as that.
And counsel, I'm gonna ask for permission to leave. My escort has arrived.
Thank you, escort. And how's your elbow just, real quick?
It's doing very well. I'm not agitated anymore than I have at home, take care of it. But I am available, emails, phone calls, even if I gotta come into town, I still have an escort for a couple of days.
I'm mad that you're here, but I'm glad you're okay.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you, counsel.
Very good.
No, ma'am.
I just think you need a better story as to how you injured him.
All right, Troy. Have a good evening, and that's your lovely wife back there. Yes, hi. First time I've seen you. Yeah, I, I don't think so. Have we, yeah, okay.
Bye, sweetie. Safe travels home, y'all.
Now we're at number 14, resolution of the credit debit card surcharge. Jan, I thought we already went over this. You just went in cluedo's again for bringing this up a second time, yeah?
We have to establish a resolution to set the fee. And so this is what I brought before council. And we just need to approve the resolution to be able to actually enact the surcharge.
Okay.
And that will have to be read by Title I of the Regulator Agenda.
So we'll put this on the Regulator's agenda Monday? Counsel, we good with that? Okay. Now we get to number 15, resolution 2021-16, re-adopting the March 2, 2008 Blue Run Park Management as amended. Item added to the agenda. This is a continuation of trying to fine-tune our ordinance and have it match the management plans of everything where it's pretty much harmonized and mirroring. Since this is more of a legal thing, Andrew, I just ask you to take it from here and, you know, describe what you're trying to do and why.
Sure, sure. And there's a few things I'd like to do leading into that. I wanna provide you with an update of what has transpired since the ordinance, at least the draft ordinance was completed and submitted to planning, since that's going to be coming up. FCT has also looked at it, and I will, I will comment on that. First thing is, you know, I understand from some of the comments here that there's quite a bit of emotion coming from some of the people who would be regulated by how the city chooses to move here. I'm not gonna address any of those accusations that were made earlier, other than, and it's understandable so, that, that there's some emotion that comes along with that. And I'm, I'm not gonna address those accusations other than saying that this council has had several workshops where the public can attend and going through and creating ordinances and regulations for Blue Run Park. Previous councils have been fully apprised of communications with FCT and have received those correspondences. And this council has received those correspondences as well. So this is something that everyone has been kept abreast of. Now, as far as some of the things we heard earlier, there is clearly a misunderstanding of what some of the documents do and what some of the definitions are attributed to some of the words in those documents, and that's not on the city's side. What you had happen several years ago, and this is where disallowable activities comes into play versus commercial use, apples and oranges. There is some overlay, but what, what occurred back prior to 2019, the city hired a consultant to do a compliance audit. Now, one of the things that was incumbent upon that consultant to take a look at, and where FCT commentary was sought, was on disallowable activities. Disallowable activities is a term that was found in the original grant application. It's also in the declaration of restrictions. They came along with the deed to Blue Run Park, and FCT placed in that certain disallowable activities, they come, it's, they call them reportable activities. Those activities can have negative tax consequences, as we discussed at the last meeting when this came up. And so what that document does, and this is not the management plan, this again is the warranty deed. So what a disallowable activity is, that is the ability of FCT to unilaterally say, hey, city, if you're allowing something here, we can disallow you to do it. Now, disallowable activities can also be used if they go through a test through FCT and an audit to make sure that they are IRS compliant so those tax consequences don't have to occur. So that is a tax thing. There is also the management plan. But what was happening back then with the compliance audit, the city wanted to make sure, and what Ms. Bown was tasked with, what I was tasked with, is just going to FCT, checking and making sure that, well, we know that we have vendors who are utilizing the park. We know that the money is paid off-site. Is that a disallowable activity for tax consequences? Is the city somehow not compliant? It had already been looked at before and said, no, those are not disallowable activities. FCT agreed, yes. FCT agreed, yes. Shuttleling is not a disallowable activity. Doesn't mean it can't be disallowed, it just means for the purpose of those documents, it's not a disallowable activity. So when you look at the management plan, and again, disallowable activity, it's that unilateral ability of FCT to say, you can't do it. Has no bearing on what the city can do as far as regulations. The city's management plan, on the other hand, has several sections in there that state that any commercial activities must be entered into, must be authorized by an agreement with FCT and the city. FCT did not draft the management plan. The city adopted the management plan, FCT looked at it, they said, you know, that is fine. But ultimately, what FCT said back in 2019, which they have said again this year, look, city, the message is, when it comes to regulating in the management plan, you as the city are in charge with, are in charge of enforcing the terms of the management plan as well as making regulations. And what you have council doing now is making those regulations. As far as an update, in speaking with FCT, both verbally and in writing, FCT has no objection to the city's current proposed resolution, which amends the management plan for, to allow fishing in the interior pond. So FCT is already on board with that. FCT has confirmed that the interpretation I just gave you regarding disallowable activities per these certain other documents versus management plan, not the same thing. Okay? The city can regulate Blue Run Park as a cease fit and in compliance with the management plan, and council changed the management plan. They have no issue with that. Further, FCT has indicated they have no issue with the draft ordinance as it's currently written. I provided those documents to you, you know, in correspondence. If you have any questions for me, I will be happy to, you know, discuss it further. But really, that's exactly where we always have been. The city has the ability to regulate Blue Run Park, Blue Run Park is the city's. Okay? As far as what this resolution is doing, now, there were some other comments regarding that resolution is not the form of the management plan. That's absolutely right. Management plan is that standalone document that you see me carrying in my binder, it's a very long document. This resolution, whenever a council or whenever a legislative body changes a document, you can be doing it generally by resolution or by ordinance. The original management plan, not adopted by ordinance, so any changes, we can do by resolution, just like a CRA plan. Now, I believe the CRA plan needs to be amended by ordinance, but it wasn't always that way. But in this case, we can do resolution to change this. So council has already looked at the first round of this resolution, which was just changing the fishing in the interior pond. One of the things that was discussed previously, and it thought it might take too much time to do, was also changing the management plan to incorporate the definition that council has crafted of commercial use into the management plan. As we've stated from the beginning, commercial use is not defined within the management plan. So, you know, that goes back to the past several years. Once the city found out it was in compliance with the audit, it was up to council to decide what they wanted to do about any use of the park. If it had been determined at that time that commercial use, you know, shuttling or something is definitely commercial use, well, the city could have gone in and imposed enforcement to, you know, essentially alleviate that activity. But what FCT stated, it's in the city's lap of what you want to do about it and how you want to regulate it. And so, you know, that is how we got to where we are today. Commercial use was not defined, so the initial steps of the ordinance were created to define that. But it also makes sense, and FCT has been moving so quickly on this, and so it's not difficult to amend the management plan, as we've seen with the fishing, they're very responsive. One of the things when I was having discussion with FCT, I spoke with them and said, hey, do you think there'd be an issue with putting what we have in the ordinance as far as the definition into the management plan? Said, no, we'd have to review it, but don't think that's a problem. So what this resolution is doing, based on that conversation that, and discussions with Mandy and as far as moving forward, was to actually do just that, to place this definition that council created in the ordinance into the management plan. The management plan is not a comprehensive plan, obviously. You know, everybody here now is familiar to some level with land use, comprehensive plan ordinances. I like to think of the management plan as being similar to that, because any kind of ordinance needs to be consistent with that. So yes, an ordinance can define commercial use, but since we're talking about the plan itself, it makes sense to put it in there. What this ordinance now would be, or this resolution is doing, is putting that into the plan. Now, what council would need to do, the next step with this, would be to look at this, make sure this is what council wants to put in the plan, and from there, it would go out, just as it did before, to the city's partners, the Office of Greenways and Trails, Greenways and Trails, the county, and FCT for their comments. From there, it would be adopted, and then you would choose an effective date. You know, one thing that has not been discussed up here at length is when these regulations would be, become effective, presumably, I understand it before the next, before the next season, but probably right around that time to allow, you know, for that transition and to give everybody notice of when they're going to become effective. And so that's what you see before you. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just real quick, there was something said that what we were doing wasn't that the police couldn't enforce it. I mean, wasn't that the whole, I know there's a bunch of different processes why we were doing this, but that was one of the main reasons for that chief to tell his officers, if anybody has a question, I mean, they're not going to have this in their back pocket, but you know what I mean?
I think what was being referenced there, the management plan just states that rules and regulations, you know, rules for the park should be in ordinance form. Now, those were in 2015, put into a resolution form, and it looks from the history and looking back at that, that there was supposed to be an overarching ordinance for all parks, and somehow that dropped out of the project, but the resolution was adopted. So at this point in time, since the rules are being further fleshed out, and there are some changes to them, commercial use being defined and regulating, you know, current commercial use at the park, those are being placed into ordinance form. Now, the ordinance that's created with the rules doesn't become part of the management plan, and I think that was insinuated. So no, those are standalone from the management plan. You have the management plan and the rules. What this is doing is taking that same definition, putting it in the management plan. And it's in a resolution form, simply because it's referencing the actual page of the current management plan, it's just a cut and paste. This is going to go into the current document, this resolution re-adopts the management plan. Now, there is some historical information in the management plan that is not up to date. At some point in time, it would make sense for some sort of, you know, committee to take a look at that and update some of the historical information, but just getting it re-adopted, saying this is the plan that you're going to go by, these are the amendments.
Chief can enforce it if they need to.
Yes, resolutions can be enforced if there's a framework for it. But, you know, ultimately, the whole idea of the ordinance is to comply with the requirements directly of the management plan. It was supposed to be in ordinance form from the very beginning for the rules and so forth, so put them in the form that it's supposed to be in.
I have a question. Why is the word agreement used instead of the word contract?
And where is, is that? What were you referring to there? Agreement, if it means the second paragraph.
Except by written agreement by the city?
Yeah.
Look above the word FCT.
According to that existing or future local, local, inter-local agreements between the city of Danell and Marion County system.
So I can't, right there, agreement in the underlined form, if you look at B up there, that first part, this is a continuation of a paragraph. Agreement is the word that's used currently in the management plan. Now, as far as legal terms go, agreement and contract are interchangeable. Typically, agreement is the favored word in most documents. Agreement is what is used in the management plan, so agreement is also what's used in the underlined version. Where we see agreement up there, where it says, any and all fees collected for use of this property will be placed in a segregated account solely for upkeep, and there's a reference to agreement, it's not under B, but it's under, all right, will be prohibited except by written agreement, that is language directly out of the management plan. What you're seeing with the underlined portion of the resolution, that's just a direct continuation of that existing paragraph within the management, within the management plan.
Mandy, would you put it back up again?
So what, maybe this will help explain it a little bit, the way, the way I'm understanding it. You have, the management plan references commercial use in two different sections, which Andrew has identified here, in paragraph five, entitled easements, concessions, and leases, and it's referenced again in paragraph five, chapter five, management needs. But there's no definition of commercial use. You all have come up with a definition of commercial use that you're satisfied with within the ordinance. So what Andrew has done here, in addition to our original purpose for proposing the resolution, which had to do with fishing in the pond, in the interior pond, that was it. But now that Andrew's come up with this idea, all we're doing is wherever, those two sections where it's referenced in the management plan, he's just taking that definition out of the ordinance and popping it in the management plan, so that they're consistent with one another.
So this, where it says notwithstanding, it's word for word out of our ordinance?
That is paraphrased there, that notwithstanding, the actual definition is that, if you scroll a little bit back up, Mandy, "commercial use means," I'll just read what's verbatim, "commercial use means the sale or rental of any item, good concession, or merchandise within the boundaries of Blue Run Park," and, "two, provision of any service performed within the boundaries of Blue Run Park regardless of whether compensation for such service is paid onsite or offsite." That is directly from the ordinance. The second portion there is almost exactly like the ordinance. The ordinance addresses something a little bit different before that, as an exemption. This just references KP Hole Shuttle being, you know, specifically authorized to operate in accordance with the plan and local interagreements.
Right, the spirit of this right here clearly is to absolutely make sure that there is a total understanding that the agreement we have with Marion County is simply them picking up their customers and bringing them back to KP Hole, their customers.
That's right.
If there's any language in there that can be interpreted other than that or used in different ways, we just simply want to state the obvious. We have a, this whole park was predicated on that agreement. Basically, that's why the county got into this, is they wanted to make sure they had a place for KP Hole. And we agreed to it, that we'll, we'll take the park, and we'll do these sort of things, and we'll manage it, and we'll give you access to this takeout. So that's the only thing we want to be held to, that the county, someone who is their customer, not someone else's customer, the county has the right to shuttle them back to KP Hole. If this language supports that, or having to bid, weakens that, you know? So as long as this cannot be used in a challenge, that it creates some sort of wiggle room.
No, that second portion there is just referencing the actual, as you're pointing out, KP Hole Shuttle service, in order for any other vendor who meets that definition of commercial use to operate any type of activity that would require an agreement with the city and FCT, and express agreement.
So your reason for recommending this to council is to actually strengthen up things where now you have a description of what the commercial use is and what the agreement is in, in the management plan along with the ordinance?
Yes. By ordinance, you've decided what you think commercial use is, management plan still references commercial use, but is not defined within the management plan. Makes the most sense in the world to put it in the management plan, especially since FCT is on board with that definition.
Okay. Okay, thank you. What, Sodom, what do we need to do with this now?
We'll do exactly what we did with your first review of this. I'll have a motion on the consent agenda for you to offer our staff to forward it to the managing partners for review and comment.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
I believe we are on now 16, the city clerk evaluation, is that correct?
Failure.
What do you want to, what do you want to do with this, Ms. Mandy?
You have the compot version, it's in the backup. I emailed it to you this afternoon.
Oh, I haven't been, I haven't been sitting still long enough, looking at my emails this afternoon.
I'll just summarize from what I can remember. Looking at it from the five council members that submitted this, we all submitted it. The scores with Mandy were overall wonderful, very high. Strong, strong marks in all different categories, positive comments. When you added up the comments and the numeration that's attached to the comments, Mandy's scores were as high as they basically could to be to warrant her 3% merit increase. I will say this, Mandy, we're not going to go on and on with backslapping and stuff, but you have stepped up in a tough situation over the last six or 10 months. And a lot of people have stepped, but I would say you, as much as anyone, were the, was the glue that kept this boat stuck together and allowed it to kind of right itself. And I've worked very closely with you, I've gotten to know you a lot better, and I'm very appreciative of everything you've done. You're a, you're a real nice balance in the city between the various factions that are out there. You, you are kind of a neutral person, and no matter what side of the coin you're on, people appreciate you, people trust you, and people value your opinion. So congratulations on your evaluation. Want me to continue? That was so good.
Do you want to put this on consent to approve the evaluation and authorize the Marion and Reese?
Consent.
Yeah, consent, very good. All right.
You don't look deep enough into those eyes.
Board appointments, we're at number 17 right now. We have a couple. Who's going to go over that?
Me. That kindly pressed motion to approve Ms. Jane Keely's as a reappointment for a full member of the Historic Preservation Board for a three-year term, effective November 8, 2021 through the 24th. And Mr. James Burchett, burpl resignation from the Historic Preservation Board, effective October 19. And that will bring in the appointment of the first alternate, Mr. Welton Martin, to fulfill Mr. Burchett's unexpired term of November 8, 2021 through the 24th. And the last one is an appointment of Ms. Lisa Shiffield as first alternate member for the Planning Commission for a three-year term, effective November 8 through November 8, 2024.
Is that on the consent agenda?
Any comments? I'll put it on the consent agenda. Very good, that Lisa came back, that was, that was, that was big. All right, Ms. Sodom, it's on the consent agenda. Go to number 18. I'm just going to touch on this briefly. This, this is something that could be a meeting in itself. As we all know, the agreement that we had with the state for the boat ramp and that side of the parking lot, we did not renew the agreement. So right now... So right now, the city has control of the entire parking lot and the city has control of the boat ramp. One of the things council has said, and I think everybody would agree to this, is one of the challenges of the city is the number of people that come into the city that use the city's facilities, enjoy themselves for the day. And they leave and they don't drop a dime in the city. One of the challenges for us has been and continues to be with the influx of people that come in and enjoy the city, how do we get them to spend their money while they're in town where we get the benefit of it? Council in the summer of 2018, I think Vice Mayor was the only person on the council that's currently here, actually passed a parking ordinance.
I voted against that.
I know, and I was going to bring that up. It passed a parking ordinance that is actually a place that allows the city to put in meters basically throughout the city. It was passed by a very contentious split vote of three-two, but it was passed. I understand Vice Mayor and Mayor Green voted no. Mr. Hancock, Mr. Winkler and Chuck Dillon voted yes. So it has been passed. One of the encumbrances to the concept was we only had control of half of the parking lot. So how in the world you put meters on one half? You can't put meters on the other half because the state has. So we've gotten by that. Now, if we ever, and I'm not going in this direction, I'm just putting out there, we are now in a position to reexamine that. Revenue sources can be a actual charge for the boat ramp fee. Couldn't do that when the state had it, we could do that. We can implement parking meters if we want. We can put them in certain areas, I understand, and we don't have to put them. It's not all or nothing, is that correct, Andrew? If we wanted to just focus on certain areas for parking meters, we could.
That's right.
So it is now, we are in charge, we are in control, we can do what we want. And it's already been done by a previous council. The hard part of passing an ordinance has already been done. All we have to do is basically put it in play. I will tell you that, and I've worked very closely with Chief, in the summertime, the truck and trailer spots, I think we have 28 of them, are full every day from sunlight, sunup to sundown. And there's an additional 20 to 30 cars and trailers parked on the side roads throughout the city that don't have parking. That's an incredible revenue source right there, people coming in with their boats and trailers, whether you wanted to charge a ramp fee or charge a parking fee for that. So anyway, it's just something to throw out there, let everybody on council know that this is a possible significant revenue source. It does mostly go after visitors, especially if we earmark it toward things that are used for the water. So we're not necessarily taxing through parking fees our residents. We're taxing those that are coming into the city and using our facilities. So if anybody wants to pick up on that and go forward with it, everything's in place that needs to be replaced. So that's pretty much what I have to say.
I think it's a good idea to do the boat ramp. I don't have a problem with that because, I mean, you go to any boat ramp.
Twenty bucks at KP Hole to use it.
Well, I don't think you should do that.
No, but I'm just saying, you're right, I'm saying you're right.
But, and then do an annual pass for those residents that we do have in the city that can get a break and not have to pay $5 or whatever it would be. I mean, I don't have a problem with that, I'm so not the biggest fan of the, yeah, parking meters, but I can understand it.
Well, is there a possibility going along with what you say that a city resident could have a sticker that they put on their car that they would not, they would not have to pay a fee?
That's such a hassle.
Okay, well, this is an idea.
That's an idea, but that'd be a hassle.
Yes, Ms. Covich.
I just think that if you look at what is parked there, the value of the vehicles that tow the trailer on which was placed a $30,000 to $60,000 vessel, there's a reason why they choose to park here. And there are other options right up the road and down the road. Okay, Eagle Drive over by Route 200, down by Lake Ruses. They park here because they know their vessel and their tow vehicle is secure and people will pay for that security without a doubt.
Well, just to go along with that, if we charged $10 a day to use a truck and trailer parking spot, there is some turnover during the day. During the summer, I really think we'd be making anywhere from $300 to $10 between $300 and $500 a day.
Yep.
For the four months of the summer. So it is, it's there for us, it's there for us to take a look at it if we want. All right, so maybe sometime, and if we're going to do something like this, just like we're trying to do with the ordinance, we're trying to get the ordinance passed before new season coming up. So if we are interested in implementing something like this, we should, April 15th is kind of the date I have in my mind for when the season kind of starts. I believe that KP Hole starts its tour season on the 15th.
So would that be a Georgina thing to bring to us a fee?
We have a fee resolution already in place, we'd have to revisit that. If we want, if you want, we can bring this all back to you with some more specifics at the workshop in December with, you know, if you want to go over the ordinance as it is today, go over the resolution as it is today, we can do that at the next workshop.
Then we can tweak it for January, if we need to.
If you were to amend the ordinance, it's going to take two readings, but if you wanted to change the fee resolution, you just need one.
I think the fee resolution is like a dollar an hour or something like that. 24/7, right? Yes, Jan?
Just keep in mind, depending on the value of any equipment that might be needed, a kiosk, meters, something like that, we'll probably have to go out for a bit. So that will add on to the length of time it takes.
Well, if the city wants to sell me the rights to have parking up, I'd be glad to have it. It sounds like a pretty good deal. I think I really.
I think there's some kind of a.
I think it's, it's just, it's money just sitting there saying, take, pick me up. So anyway, why don't we put this on the agenda for, what'd you say, Mandy, December? Okay, good. All right, that's all I wanted to say on that. Council comments?
Got a comment?
Yes.
Great news, Nine Island Cove has been named a historical registered archaeological site in the state of Florida. And a lot of people just might say, hooray, but what does it do for the, for the city of Donellen? What it does is it's going to open grant opportunities. Take a look at the Florida Department of State Historic Resources. Annually, they throw out grants. If we do get Nine Island Cove purchased, that means it'd be grants or matching grants to improve, to make improvements within the property as far as road, parking and so on. Kiosks, definitely, and so on. Also, Visit Florida also has grants out there for historical sites of importance. So kudos to Dwight Porter, Dominic Batista, and from the Greater Donellen Historic Society, Andy Murray and John Starkey helped put this grant proposal together. We have a site ID, MR4244. And going back to the Historical Society, they had a great, another great fundraiser, fundraiser last Friday night and our former mayor, Nathan Witt, performed with his two partners and they were awesome, okay? Encourage everyone to keep going, keep coming to the depot and enjoy their dinners at the, what's it called again? The Whistlestop Cafe, right, the Whistlestop Cafe. So everything they make there is great and every cent goes to, into the coffers of the Greater Donellen Historical Site, I'm sorry, Historical Association. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay.
Well, I'm just a little younger, we have a new pastor in that church.
New pastor?
He said to us that he's going to be inviting the mayor and the chief of police to his installation service in December.
To do what?
They have an installation service.
Installation?
Yeah.
Air conditioning?
It's a swearing-in kind of service.
Yeah, it is. And he already said he wants the name and that's what we chief, that's what they call it.
Okay.
But that's all, you know. I'm just excited about that because we've worked with him for two years.
Congratulations, that's wonderful. Can't wait to meet him. Oh, wonderful. The chief probably already knows him.
Vice Mayor?
I don't know, he's in the chatroom training.
Yeah, just real quick, and because of my comment, I'm going to, what could you say?
I'm sorry, it's a phone number you said about this to me.
Delayed reaction.
I'm sorry.
Well, I said something.
And you thought I was joking.
Thank you, Natalie, for clarifying that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're good, I got your back, babe. All right, about these meetings, Mr. Mayor and clerks.
Oh, God.
We have got to, 22, we got, we, it's, I don't know what we need to do, I don't know what we need to do if it's not what so many presentations come on or, but there was just something we've got to do. This is a little beyond, and my try to sprang her chair. So anyway, I'd really like for us to work on that. And the other thing is, is that today, a friend of mine, a coworker, was in a fender bender out here at the crossroad, at the cross site. I came up here because she called me and I pushed the button to cross the road. Button doesn't work. And she stopped because somebody was crossing the road and she slammed on her brakes, but she wouldn't hit them and of course, we know how that all goes. But, so I do have a phone call in to TPO and to FDOT about what they can do to get that light fixed. That's kind of craziness that it almost got somebody killed today, either pedestrian or other people. And then, good news, when I was here yesterday, day before yesterday, anyway, whatever day, yeah, yesterday, I think, I happened to be in here and the, you know, everybody's been told that Circle K is closing. Circle K is not closing. That is being purchased, it will be a kangaroo. They're going to redo the interior of the building. And it's a company out of Brandon or Bradenton, don't quote me on that, I always get those Vs mixed up. And they already, I think they purchased, if I remember correctly, he said they purchased over 20 Circle Ks, I'm assuming in this area, and that they own over 500 gas stations, I don't know what name brand, but anyway. So good news that our business will be getting an upgrade and it's not closing, so that's good to hear. That won't be a blighted-looking thing when you drive into our town.
The question hasn't been asked, I mean, may keep the.
I didn't ask him, I just was being Valerie knowsy and asked, introduced myself. But I thought it was great news that he.
Because I asked the question out there.
And I hope, yeah, I hope staff does get to stay there, but that's, but it was good news, I thought, so.
I have something else that I think I need, do need to bring up. Something interesting happened today. Driving back from Donellen around lunchtime, I noticed there was smoke. There was a field fire on our farm.
Oh, no.
And what has happened is we share, our farm shares a right of way with the state park. They had promised to remove dead trees that continued to fall on the power lines that cut across the corner of the park and come onto our farm, okay? In fact, I talked to the regional park manager, Anne Bartol, just about a month ago and they actually went out and marked trees that they were supposed to bring down, cut down. These are all dead trees, okay? And what happened is a tree came down, it took a cable down. The cable was connected to the power pole on 484. The cables fell on top of the hot electric power line and the power line fell into the field and there were fires starting all over the field. Somebody called 911 before I did, so they responded. But here's what's troublesome, okay? My husband called the state park and he said, those trees were marked to come down. This is the fourth time in four months that we've had an incident with our power lines coming down. When are you going to take the trees down? And the park manager's comment was, well, we have a problem with the city of Donellen, they won't let us, they're getting in confrontations with us about taking trees down. But I just wanted you to be aware of that comment.
This was Larry Snead?
Yes, I believe it was Mr. Snead. Because I talked to Tina, the assistant manager, after Bob had called and she said, I can't verify what was said to your husband, but those trees are supposed to come down and they're dead. So I just, I don't know if a phone call to Snead or what, but I don't think the city of Donellen is interfering with their taking down of dead trees. But that comment was made.
Mandy, you want to pick this up and make a phone call?
Sure.
Yeah, what we went over a couple of years ago with them, clearing that big patch had nothing to do with what you're suggesting right there, nothing whatsoever. Anything else? Okay, I have a couple, but they're very, very. In response to the accident and the crosswalk, FDOT has again modified their crosswalk plan. I think we all got the email of it. I must Chief or Mandy has heard something. I have not heard anything from the business community with any pushback on the updated plan. So it sounds like the plan that you have just received within the last week at this point is where it looks like the, Chief, is it, looking at the map, does the crosswalk kind of now come across 41 at an angle? Kind of looks like it, rather than straight across, it kind of comes across as an angle?
Where I did not receive.
You didn't receive that?
I got this one a few calls about here.
Okay, all right. As far as that crosswalk light not working, I've noticed recently it had some construction tape around it. Is that light totally turned off or is it just today?
Sometime, I've heard from others that cross there, that one day it works, one day it's not.
Maybe Mandy get ahold of Mr. Ho. Mr. Ho, maybe get a phone call to him and, you know, project, yeah. Su Ho? Let him know that, that's a disaster waiting to happen, someone can think they're protected and they have no protection.
And you can't say a question. This, Sue sent this out, 1028, copies you on it, you may have missed it, but this is the new plan.
And this is a new one, Chief, if you didn't get it.
Right now, you see where it is here, right now? They've moved it further south here on the maple.
They're pushing it back? That makes no sense. Even closer to the bridge. Yeah, it's closer to Citrus County, right?
Chief, watch her and take a good look at it.
Right. And then it would test here and land over here on their right of way.
Yes, please.
Could you let council, you have what? Could you let council, you have what, the notation he put underneath it, what they were trying to do, is that included? I should just read that out loud, most of us can't see.
So, we did some further brainstorming on the new location for the mid-block crossing and came up with some minor tweaks. Please see attached for updated concept. Even though these changes are minor in comparison to what we had accomplished previously, we believe that by moving the crosswalk to line up with the raised median, we can effectively eliminate the potential conflicts with the left-turn vehicles. Safety is one of our most important priorities, so we wanted to make sure that we deliver the most refined design possible. With this concept, we will need to build a small landing pad on the Blue Gator side. This is feasible since this would still be within our right-of-way, with the light blue line representing our recorded right-of-way limits as shown on the concept. The WB40 design truck can still make all the left-turn movements as is the case today. And what I'm assuming, I don't know what a WB40 truck is, but you see these both in here and here, it says on there, WB40, I'm assuming those are the, like, delivery trucks, the semis.
So, chief, where this is kind of where you come into play on this, the businesses involved, as long as it's not impacting their turns, they're going to be happy. So, they're not looking at it as potentially safety hazards or anything like that, they're just saying, "Oh, I'm not losing my turn lane, so I'm good with it." We need to look at it and make sure that this doesn't create some sort of safety issue.
Because I thought the main reason why we wanted it to go forward was because people coming over the vi-dock and crossing in are kind of, they've stopped at the red light and now they're going. They're not wanting to stop again so short, but chief, you're the expert on that kind of stuff. And that's where people are turning in with their boats as well.
Right.
I mean, I, I just kind of...
You know, where the state is on this, and if they don't get any pushback, in other words, if the businesses are happy and the city pretty much is mute, they're going to take the position, "Okay, everybody's pleased, and let's go forward." So, if there is something that we don't like, we need to let them know.
But, yeah, I'll leave it to chief to kind of, you know.
I see nothing safety-wise wrong with, I mean, the businesses, they have their concerns, but safety-wise, you can, there's a turn lane going into the Blue Gator, which eliminates the issue that we're having now turning into the Blue Gator. All the other businesses...
Aren't affected.
Are not affected. I'll see nothing wrong with...
And you're okay with it, them coming over the vi-dock? Citrus County vi-dock? That close after coming off of a red light and accelerating to stop real quick? That speed limit signs up? Okay.
But also the bridge.
Yeah. And you figure they're...
Up there to there.
Do what, sir?
You're only moving it up there to there.
Well, I know, but I thought the whole reason why we wanted it moved in the first place was to get people to have more time to stop, to, that's what I thought.
No.
That's what, that wasn't the whole reason?
No. There was still three reasons they moved it. One is because people turned it into the Blue Gator, had no turn lane, and number two, when they moved it up here, all the businesses complained.
I knew that, that was the smartest place to move it. All right, whatever, chief's just okay with it.
All right, chief?
Yep.
All right, I apologize, somehow you should have gotten a copy of that, I don't know how you got, left out a little.
It's okay, I didn't get Mandy's with her evaluation. And just real quick, over on FDOT.
What was it?
It's probably in your junk mail.
From Sue.
Just, real quick, real, real, real quick regarding FDOT, the, we found out last Tuesday, last Tuesday, that the 41 widening project has been canceled due to funding. I spoke with FDOT representatives, and they were upset as well that it got cut, and Rob was going to a meeting to find out more details, and when he gets back in, he'll let me know. So, just to let you know that it was nothing anybody did, the state, our local FDOT was as surprised as we were.
I think it was probably cut in one of their pre-legislative committees, and they're probably wrangling, and I might be surprised if sometime during the session it's not put back in.
It hopefully will be, but it was because there was a threshold that it went over, and the threshold, and they, even the FDOT were not understanding why it was...
My money would be, my money will be before the session is over in May, it will be put back in.
And just as long as we don't get, yeah, there's a whole thing.
Yeah, and then, just a very last thing, we were talking about the Nine Island Cove, never want anybody to forget that Paul Marafino continues to take this under his arm, and he's pushing on it, keeping track of it. So, if we're going to give accolades, we always want to include Paul, and, you know, Paul's really, I didn't, who's in the audience, he is also very active on bird dogging this thing and making sure it doesn't die on the vine. So, with that, we're done with council comments, department head comments?
I just have one thing, I just wanted to give you an update. We did start working on Facebook page, and we're looking for a launch, our goal is to have that by January 1st, have it live by January 1st. We just need to build it, so that's, but we've started on it. And Georgina does have, we're going to start giving you monthly reports on the status of what's going on in community development as far as permitting and code enforcement. She has, I think she printed one for you guys, but I think in the interest of time, we'll just email them to you instead of going over them. And that's all I have. Oh, one more thing, you got a packet that's got a letter, I had a request from this guy, he dropped by today, wants to do a short presentation on Monday, on charging stations.
Yeah, I love charging stations.
I already talked to Susan about that. Troy talked to Susan about that too, that wheels are already turning on that.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give you a heads up.
I'm gonna get...
I'll reach out to him tomorrow and let him know that we'll put him on the agenda if he has...
Well, we really have...
Actually, I'm gonna talk to Susan, I think they're probably gonna cancel that presentation. Troy talked to her and said, "Hey, you know, we're on the list, the waiting list in 2022 for the park and plug grant."
I'll make sure, because we have to publish the agenda for Monday, tomorrow, so...
Vice Mayor, go ahead, comment.
I mean, that's really a workshop agenda item, and it's not a city council item. I get it, I, look, I'm all in favor of them, but I'm sorry, we've got to get our meetings under control.
That's what I said.
I think he's a workshop meeting for December.
If you tell me not to do it, I'm gonna do that.
So, we don't have a policy, we really don't have a policy.
As long as they meet the deadline in the resolution.
The way I would look at it, just on a quick thought, presentations at a meeting should be something that council is initiating at a meeting. The workshop should be requests. I mean, that's the way I would look at it.
Are we allowed to do that, Mr. Attorney?
I don't have a copy of the resolution in front of me right now, I do know that the resolution, you know, the way it's currently written allows someone to make a request and it's put on. So, you know, I, any city council should have control of their agenda and determine when things are, staff, you know, if something cannot be put on due to space-time, there are, you're allowed to make reasonable restrictions for that. So, I think that even if the resolution states that, you can still prefer things, but it should be changed in the resolution. So, that's something to definitely look at, perhaps for the next workshop, as far as changing the resolution. Again, I don't have it in front of me right now, I don't believe it's...
Can we just ask him the time of December?
Okay.
For the workshop?
Yeah.
I mean, let's see, might just...
I agree, I agree. I mean, someone could actually sabotage a regular meeting by having ten people sign up for presentations, right? I mean, you could, you could sabotage a meeting if you want, in other words, a filibuster, right?
Yes, a filibuster.
So, especially...
Probably going home, but that's okay.
Especially with our meetings, we should have a little control about what we do. Workshops, it gets a little dicier, we can't be picking and choosing who speaks and who doesn't.
And again, I have nothing against the issue, because...
Yeah, your point is well-made. Okay, council comments done, department head comments, we all done with that? City Attorney?
I have nothing further tonight.
Okay, those that have hung in there all evening, thank you very much. We're at item number 22, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak, here is your chance. Okay, Brenda?
Brenda Jarville, 11661, can't ride. Just thinking outside the box and listening to the discussion continuing with the police station and land, it looks like you will be exploring two options, and I want to throw out there that I thought of in case A, Plan A or Plan B doesn't meet your satisfaction. I'm sure most of you are aware of the building that is empty and been so for quite a while, Gary's Carpet. I had spoken with the owner several months ago and with Annette, and Gary had been taken to hospice, but, and I didn't know that when I had reached out to her. She said they were asking at that time, $300,000, that they had listed for, but would take any reasonable offer. So, I would ask you to keep that in mind as you're exploring these other ideas, because with that building demolished, if Plan A or B doesn't work out, then the police station could have the new modular specifications on that property, and it would be contiguous with the fire station property the city owns. So, just a little idea there, I'm quoting, in case the other two options aren't satisfactory.
So, what you're suggesting, rather than a remodel, you're talking about just demolish the building and use all that space and put our new police station right there?
That's another option to think about.
Thank, thank you.
Because you, you know, money-wise, you wouldn't have to worry about the retrofit, you already know what the new building would cost, you already have that. You've got the visibility that you want, you know, on 41, and as I said, it'd be contiguous, you know.
And it would still be attached to the old police station. So, yeah, yeah, we can put parking there too. Yeah, thanks, thank you very much. All these things are, believe me, they're appreciated. Thank you. Okay, Burke, did you want to speak?
I'm Burke Eno, I live at 9220 Southwest 193rd Circle in Rainbow Springs. I'm the president of Rainbow River Conservation. I would like to welcome Georgina to her first workshop. Did anybody warn you to bring your sleeping bag?
No. You weren't. And she was pregnant.
I got three short items to speak to. Number one, I hope we're closing in on the finish of the Blue Run Park plans or rules. And I do wonder, since the planning commission did not hear it at their last meeting, which was canceled, I understand, what's gonna happen? Mayor, you kind of gave me a suggestion as to what you would do to get this wrapped up, but is that still in effect?
The goal, Burke, is to try to get this passed in front of the upcoming season to give everybody who's involved with whatever notice that there are some changes. So, if you said to me, what would be the goal, having everything done, the goal would be to have it finished January, February at the latest?
I hope so.
Just keep in, just keep in mind, let me tell you, once it comes out at a planning commission, then it comes back to us, and then it has to have two public hearings spaced out apart. So, there's, there's a built-in thing, and it's just a process.
Okay, well...
Yes, Andrew.
One thing I would add to that, by putting this in the management plan itself and defining commercial use, the management plan, you know, requires that commercial use have, and you know, for that to happen, there has to be an agreement between the city and between FCT. So, if it's in the management plan, then there is a regulation in place, and that only requires a resolution. Now, you know, so that can certainly be adopted in advance of the ordinance. So, that speeds up the process just by having it in a resolution form, assuming that FCT provides its comments as quickly as it did the first go-round.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, well, you had six workshops where you have addressed the Blue Run Park rules. I think it's time to wrap it up. The second item I wanted to speak to is the Nine Island Cove property. I was pushing that pretty hard with the Florida Forever group, and we all had, in fact, put together what he called a note, which was really an expansion of some arguments in favor of acquiring Nine Island Cove. And part of that is what kind of wildlife corridors might be developed around Nine Island Cove, Nine Island Cove being part of such a wildlife corridor, as a matter of fact. And I shared that with some other people, I sent it up to the Florida Forever folks, Suneigh Murray, as you know, and I got, and then she shared it with the acquisition group, and the answer I got back was that, well, the Florida Forever projects that were approved by that ARC have to go to the governor and his cabinet and have final approval before, in fact, it would be classified as a Florida Forever project. And the governor is too busy traveling around the state campaigning, he's not going to have such a meeting until next June. So, I'm sneaking around his back if I can, and I've contacted, in contact with somebody that's high up in the Senate, I won't divulge that now, and hopefully, he's got enough pull to get it done a little quicker than that. In a couple of weeks, there's going to be a meeting of the Wildlife Corridor Coalition, and I have arranged for them to be able to use some room up at the Rainbow Springs Community Center. I haven't got a agenda back yet or an invitation list. I'm gonna assume that a couple of people from the city ought to attend that meeting, a council member, and possibly, I'm thinking, Jan or you or Bill. And I think that Georgina ought to get involved in this, because this is a planning that surrounds Dan Allen, could result in wildlife corridor acquisitions, and it's a big thing, really a big thing, as long as we help them. So, I'm gonna share that with you as soon as I get an agenda and appointment list or something. I'm not in charge of it, I'm just trying to help that cove, but I think it's a big thing, and I think it's a good thing for us to cooperate with them. The third thing is this agreement pertaining to the historic district enhancement plan implementation. That is a matter of implementing Mr. Metcalf's report. Metcalf had a pile of money given to him to make this out, I think he did an extremely bad job, I think it was horrible job. He's just got a racket, the DEO collecting money from them, go around and making reports that have no utility. As you were pointing out, Mayor, it's inapplicable to the city of Dan Allen. To follow up and say, "You're gonna accept the $37,500 grant associated with that," it says that it's for implementation. it says that it's for implementation of what he did. And for you to say now, oh, well, let's fudge it. Let's forget what he came up with, but we can take the grant and steer it in a different direction. That to me is just plain dishonest. If you're going to do it, if you're going to ask for the $37,500, then you ought to go back to DEO and tell them what you think of Metcalf's work and suggest something else and ask them if they'll still give you the grant to do so. But don't couch it in the way I've heard it here tonight, please. Thank you.
Okay. Bert, thank you, thank you for that. This, that particular topic is, I'm not that versed on how all that works. I feel kind of handicapped by that. I certainly wouldn't want to agree to anything that perpetuates that first study. I've tried to look at it and I cannot see anything in it that I can kind of say. The only thing that I got, I think the city got out of it, to tell you the truth, was when Mr. Metcalf said through his research, he tipped us off that our agreement with the state, 20-year agreement with the state was coming due. And that was the first time I had heard that. So right now, that is the only thing that I've grasped out of it that I thought, yes.
You have the option of trading the grant then? Just so you know, the council does not have to accept that grant.
Well, what Bert's suggesting.
Just get more details about it.
Yeah, we'll talk about what Bert is suggesting, rather than hire someone else to continue with what's already there. Just put that to the side and see if we can start over. I don't know if that, I don't know if that's, I don't, I don't think so.
I don't think that's what Bert said. Bert said that we should not accept that Metcalf's proposals at all because it says that we are in compliance to accept and implement. And the key word there is implement those plans. And I don't, I don't think we should be signing off on that. And we can just say, oh, we won't do that in the future or whatever, or we can just stuff it in a drawer for 25 years. But we are saying, it is stated that we are going to implement that, those points.
So if I have a question. If you put something in a comprehensive plan that would allow for in the future, maybe something Ken has put in his final documents. In my mind, that's implementing, even though you're not really a two-story building or burying power lines. You're positioning the city to do something in the future. Whether that be exactly what Ken Metcalf said in March, is the zoning overlay, I really don't understand what that is since that's not my area of expertise. I don't know if Georgina understands what that is and maybe we need a definition. But implementing does not mean burying power lines right away or building two-story rooms. To me, implementing means position.
So Mandy, where are we at? I thought the way we left it, you were going to investigate whether we could hire someone different? Is that the way we left it?
We can hire someone different.
So we can't?
So we don't have to go to VIT.
So maybe since, it's late and I think council is pretty much done. Maybe we just slip this on Monday's agenda for a further discussion at that time.
And maybe get a better definition for us.
Okay, can we do that?
So I, let me just make sure I have this as the. Yes, I have it on the regular agenda.
Okay, super, all right, yeah. It's what we need to, okay. Mrs. Eno, have at it.
Suzanne Eno, 9220 Southwest 193rd Circle, Dunellen. I agree with Bert and I see no point in taking a grant with the supposition that at some date in the future, something might be taken out of that plan, Metcalf's plan and used. It seems to me like there could be more important things that could be addressed and implemented without making it have any connection with Metcalf's plan. I mean, it's, to me, it's just ludicrous to follow up, add to something that nobody likes. It's senseless.
Thank you very much. There's only one man left in the room. Would you like this? Okay, very good. All right, please make note that everybody who has wanted to speak has spoken. Do we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Yes. We had a second by.